Good afternoon and welcome to the June 20, 2011 special meeting of the Glendale City Council. Can we have a roll call, please?
Council members, Menuchaan.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Quintero. Mayor Friedman.
Here. Can we hear your report, please?
The notice for a special city council meeting of Monday, June 20, 2011 was posted on Thursday, June 16, 2011 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Mr. Starbird.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, good afternoon. This is budget study session number 12, looking at the budget for the upcoming fiscal year 2011, 2012. Our plan today is to give you a brief update on where we last ended with respect to the general fund, give you a reminder of the changes, few as they were and small as they were in the general fund that you made. We need to do some general cleanup of items, revisit a few areas, I believe, based on comments from council members. In particular, I'd like to spend a few moments on Chevy Chase Library, the Rose Float and its status. We need to come back to the fire department and clarify the basic life support costs or the costs associated with that program. There may be other requests from some of you. Madam Mayor, I think you mentioned a program in PD you'd like to revisit. Mr. Quintero, I don't know if you wanted to come back and talk about the Pet and Star programs?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so I have all those on my list, in addition to getting at last to the transportation fund review, which is the last review of the last fund that we had before your public hearing tomorrow evening. So with that, let me suggest we start with Mr. Elliott giving you a quick update on where we left the general fund status as of your last study session. Bob?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, where we left off the last study session, I've projected up the spreadsheet which we've used in the past just to briefly walk you through it again. As a reminder, we opened up with an $18 million budget gap, the amount in red shown on the screen. The strategies we've employed, and I won't go through each one of them, as we've gotten down in the program reductions, and I can click to the detail of each of these by department. The use of fund balance via the police augmentation fund was $1 million. We plugged in the vacancies, assumed vacancy savings of $3 million, $3 million for employee concessions through our MOU negotiations, a variety of other strategies and cost reductions and outsourcing and consolidations, and that gave us a remaining net of about $115,000 surplus in the general fund to get us balanced at $170,226, the highlighted amount. Specific reductions, this is the spreadsheet we've shown in the past with all the various reductions by department and the amounts associated with it and the FTE account as well. But with that, that's a brief overview. If you have specific questions?
Bob, can we quickly recount the adjustments made last time? There was the skate park adjustment in supervision. There was adjustment in the library proposed reduction. Skate park is here. We reduce that. I don't remember. We, I think we kept it at about $100,000 from my notes. I thought it was a reduction of $100,000. Yes, reduction would be about 72, 73,000.
Okay.
The Rose Float, we had kept in the $50,000 but anticipated support from the association and the contribution from the association of 50. And then in library, can you switch to that one? Cindy, can you help us on a review of the adjustments made the last study session on your programs?
If I can remember the numbers. We had a total of 486 as a proposed reduction and about half of that, I don't remember the exact number, but about half of that was for the closure of Casa Verdugo and Chevy Chase that we took out or put back in.
Right. Yeah, that should be reflective of it. So we had started that discussion with a projected balance in the general fund of about $240,000, if I recall correctly. The skate park discussion actually generated some savings. The Rose Float Association detracted from the balance, the library adjustment detracted from the balance. So with all of that, we move from a projected positive balance of about $240,000 to a projected positive balance of about $115,000.
For which department is that for?
That's for general fund.
General fund.
Total general fund. And I'll just point out, because it's interesting, that the $115,000 projected balance is about seven one-hundredths of 1 percent. So any burp on almost anything and you can, you can be off by easily $100,000. That's, that's just the magnitude of what we're dealing with here. So with that, then, Madam Mayor, I think you'd ask me to first return to the Chevy Chase Library discussion.
Yeah, I think we need to deal with that before we look at the budget as a whole.
Well, let me ask just a question on your comment, Mr. Starbird. So if that's seven one-hundredths of 1 percent, should we be looking for ways to spend that down to zero with different programs? Or is that a mistake to even consider that? At this point where you were balanced and don't tinker with it at this point?
Well, let me turn to this slide that Bob has up there right now. And this, this really puts $115,000 in some perspective. These are a number of adjustments made to come up with the $18 million gap. This is about $6.5 million of them. So for example, the one that has continued to give me the most heartburn and will until we get well into the year is the $3 million we have there for our hiring freeze throughout the year. We have never counted on that. It's always been there. We've always used it as a cushion. This upcoming year, we'd be counting on it. Now, we're trying to be fairly conservative. We think we will generate more than $3 million. So $3 million is a fairly conservative number, but we've also eliminated a good number of additional positions that would have added to that cushion. So we're counting on this to the tune of $3 million. The next one that gives me a little bit of heartburn is the employee concessions. We as yet don't know what we will actually accomplish there. We think we'll be very close to $3 million. Unlikely we'll achieve it completely, unlikely we'll move past it, but we'll be very close to it. You could be off on either one of those $100,000 very easily. So that gives you some, some sense as to how significant a projected $115,000 balance is. Our sales tax revenues, the general fund, are in the neighborhood of $28 million and change. $100,000, $115,000 gives you almost no cushion in a revenue of that magnitude. So I guess what I'm saying is I'm not, $100,000 one way or the other isn't going to make a tremendous amount of difference whether we project the budget to be at zero or projected to be at $100,000. Isn't going to make a tremendous amount of difference at the end of the day because any one of these internal either revenues or expenditures can be off by $100,000 very easily, one way or the other. My encouragement is to keep everything as conservative, reasonably conservative as we can. We don't want to intentionally be overly conservative. We want to try and be as close as we can while, if we have to err, err on the side of being a little cautious.
Mr. Weaver.
Just going to say there, Jim, as we've said many times, I bet you it is the best guess based on projected revenues expenditures that you can get to being balanced. And by law, we have to be balanced to the penny, even though the reality, as you said, we could be off hundreds of thousands either way.
A budget is a plan. Budget is not a precise document. It's a plan, best you can do with the knowledge that you have based on experience and what you project may happen next year.
Do you have to then get too hung up on the fact that you're not positive on any of some of these numbers? I mean, if we get hung up on the 115, if it comes, we've got to get to the balance but knowing that the fluctuations there could change things in a month.
That's right. On the other hand, as the saying goes, take care of the nickels and the dollars will take care of themselves, you know, 20,000, 30,000, 100,000 here and there, and pretty soon you could have yourself upside down. And as you'll note from almost every department, there's been a lot of, of energy used and angst over relatively small cuts, certainly smaller than $100,000 in many, many cases, many programs. So I would just urge you to just continue to be as cautious as you can, but you all have to make the policy decision. I don't think there's been a city council that has as good a grasp of the budget and its implications and all its programs than the council sitting here. So you know the implications of, of adding some back or taking some away as well as anybody does.
And if we go into a negative, because we've all talked about things we'd like to talk about adding possibly today, goes negative, what do we do?
Well.
Get the balance.
My encouragement would be is not to go negative. If you go negative, we have to go find a place to make further reductions or increase the revenues. And again, we've tried to be as, as realistic while erring on the side of caution in all the revenue projections and the strategies we've spelled out. So my encouragement would be is certainly keep the budget as projected balanced at this point, which would mean don't go negative.
Don't hold your breath.
Mr. Menuchaan.
I have a concern about the number of positions that you have slated for elimination, 80 vacant positions, and I believe that your number of $3 million is very conservative because if you have 80 positions, that's $50,000 each, that's $4 million, not 3 million. And on those items, I would actually like to see exactly which positions are slated for elimination because they've been frozen for so long that you, staff actually doesn't need them and exactly what the cost implications are. So in, in my opinion, the $3 million that is slated there for the elimination of the 80 positions is way understated.
Well, let's see. Where to begin? First, the positions that are frozen aren't static, they're dynamic, they can be different every day. There are some positions that are proved for filling. So to give you these specific positions, I think we provided you with a list of the positions the last time we published it, of the frozen position, we, we are proposing to eliminate those. We're proposing that they remain frozen. Now, the budget does incorporate, I forget how many full-time positions for elimination, Bob, do you recall? Nine?
Nine or 10.
Well, no, in terms of elimination. Anyway, there is a lesser number than that, a small lesser number than that proposed for elimination. So the frozen positions continue to be frozen under the policy of looking at every opening that occurs in order to use it as a safety net in case we're off in our revenues, in case we don't have a recovery, in case our revenue projections are off.
I, I don't agree with that principle. I think, I was under the impression that the 80 positions that were frozen, that would be, they were specific positions, and they would be eliminated, generating savings for the general fund.
That's not what we've said, and that hasn't been the role of the frozen positions in the three years we've been dealing with this budget. What I did indicate is for the first time since the downturn, we are depending on the savings from those frozen positions to balance the budget. That is a, that is a relatively risky move, certainly more risky than we have utilized in the past two years. So in that respect, is that number overly conservative? Depends on how you define it. I will tell you, including it and counting on it is a much less conservative approach than we've taken in the past two years. And we have needed, I think in each year, to actually rely on the savings produced by the cushion to make sure we'd be in a positive position at the end of the year. Now, it also has produced some savings each year. Each year, we have generally produced savings beyond the budget in each of the, in each of the years, as much as $1.5 million to $2 million each year. But we have not saved the full amount of the, of the value of the hiring freeze each year, which means we have depended on that. So are we conservative on the projections for savings? No question about it. But I have to tell you, I'd be, I'd be very nervous including another million dollars in the savings and counting on it and then programming to use that money, and then hope will come out balanced at the end of the year.
But that is not my suggestion. I, from what I understood, there were 80 specific positions, approximately 80 specific positions that have been frozen for years. I think those positions, or the majority of them, those positions clearly should be eliminated, not be counted on, on, from year to year to generate savings for the general fund. We should have an efficient organization, and that efficiency should work through our hiring and our operations and not necessarily keep open positions for general fund savings at the end of the year. If we have positions that are not, if we have positions that are not being utilized and they're open for even two, three, four months, I think they should be eliminated because there clearly is not a need for them, and we should not include them in the general fund budget as positions that should be, that should be funded until the end of the year to see whether, whether we're generating savings or not.
Well, a final point from me, anyway. I think your decision should be based on the services provided in the community, not the luck of the draw on what position happens to be vacant in a particular department. That's how the hiring freeze is generated. It's not a planned vacancy. It's a position becomes vacant because somebody retires or they leave or something else occurs. And yet, what's presented to you here today is a primary focus on programs and the service levels that you want to provide. Beyond that, we're relying on, in the course of the year, positions being vacant, which frankly will diminish services to some extent, but it's not the thoughtful kind of approach that you have taken for the last three years in actually deciding program levels. It is a much more coarse, frankly, non-thoughtful approach to creating savings.
Jim, let me ask it differently. Is this a net of 80 throughout the city all the time? Some hired, some leave, and you're keeping a net of 80 vacant, and it could be higher salary or lower salary?
We don't focus on the number. We, we don't focus on the number, frankly. We just anticipate in the course of the year, at any given time, there'll be a number of positions open, and frankly, we've not been quick to authorize their being filled.
And that's in the 3 million?
And that's, and that's what we estimate at the year, end of the year, we'll have in, that will produce savings in the general fund at the end of the year.
That's what I'm saying, it's a net.
Yeah.
You're always going to have approximately that many vacancies occurring throughout the year.
You wouldn't always because under the best of circumstances, a staff would like to fill the positions that have been frozen because their programs in many cases depends on those positions being filled.
We're saying the same thing. You hire here and this person leaves here, but you always have about the same number net vacant.
We will have more, and we will, we have had and will have more because frankly, we are not automatically allowing departments to fill all of their authorized positions.
You have to authorize.
Now, if you go back to 2007, 2008, if you authorized a position in the budget, a department was free to go ahead and fill that. So we might have a 9% or 10% turnover in the course of a year, but we wouldn't at any one time necessarily have 80 or 90 positions that we'd be holding open. Since the economic downturn, we have been very slow to authorize positions to be filled. There's had to be justification and review for all of those. As a result, you're slower to fill them, the departments have less resources to work with, and we generate more savings at the end of the year.
To me, that's a net.
But that can be a bit of a moving target.
That number of vacancies.
Mr. Menuchaan.
Again, I, I disagree with the principle of just plugging, plugging a number into a budget, into, into the budget of $3 million. I believe that that number was plugged to see where the overall number would end up. There was no specific calculation done to determine how many of these positions have been vacant for three months, six months, a year, how many of them should be eliminated, and how many of them should be kept. If that calculation, I believe if that calculation is done, the, the number that you have up there would be different. In my opinion, it would be more than $3 million. And I understand that you're budgeting cushion into, into the general fund budget, but I think realistically, we do have to look at the efficiencies in the organization, and we do also have to look at the actual savings by eliminating these positions that have been there for a while. So putting a $3 million round number in there just, just for, for a number's sake is not, is not good policy.
Well, let me ask a question then of, of my colleague, then. What is he suggesting we do? Plug in a larger number and then somehow put less pressure on the employees' unions to give us back the 3 million? Or do other programming to extend programming which may or may not receive funding and result in an over-budget? I mean, what do we do?
No, I wasn't talking about unions or anything else. I was talking about the actual positions that would be eliminated and putting a number to the, to the, putting a number in the budget that is actually reflects the elimination of those positions regardless of unions or, I wasn't talking about that. It just specifically, specifically, there are a number of positions that have been open for a while. Those should be eliminated. Basically, that's it.
If I can. Each year, since the economic downturn, the departments have looked at all the positions that have been frozen, as well as the positions that they feel they can offer up for a permanent elimination. We've had those conversations, the very conversation which Menuchaan is describing, we have had those each and every year as we reviewed the current list of frozen positions versus those that the departments could cut on a permanent basis. And that's the key, is once eliminated, think of it as being permanent as opposed to a freeze where the departments will depend on those positions eventually being filled if they're going to be able to meet their performance levels. Now, if they're all eliminated and you say if something's open for three months or four months, it should be eliminated, that will have programmatic implications that you'd want to talk about and be aware of.
Let me see if I can get an understanding here. I think we're, we're not on the same page. As an example, and not to point this out as a specific, actual situation, but we know that one of the great employees who served the city very well, Dave Ahern, is moving on. He has a new position in July 1st. If it was Jess's decision to delay the filling of that job for a period of, let's say, three months or four months, is that the type of calculation that goes into that 80, when you say 80 positions? Is that the type of matrix and calculus that goes into coming up with that decision?
At that time, for the period that is open, it would add to that number. And again, I say about 80. That number will fluctuate depending on what time you take the snapshot of that list in a given time because some positions are authorized to be filled.
Just a moment. If it was Jess's decision that, you know, I can really, I can really hold off refilling that job for six months or seven months, that's going to give us one number. But if he says, you know what, I've got to fill that immediately within the next month, that's going to give us another number.
Different number.
We're not eliminating that job, but calculating all those jobs that are unfilled for at least a portion of the time add up to this $3 million figure. Am I understanding that correct?
Mm-hmm.
These aren't jobs sitting on the desk collecting dust, saying that we haven't, you know, we're not going to fill this, but I'm going to hold this position in case someday I need to, to fill it. Because those have already been called out of this budget.
Called out.
Well, I, I agree with my colleague. I think that is, that is a proper decision for, for the department heads. However, a number of these jobs are not, have been vacant for a while, and I understand the fact that to hire a police officer, it doesn't take three to four months if you have a vacant position. My contention is that there should be a thought process, there should be a listing of the jobs that have been vacant for a while. Some jobs, if they're vacant for three months, they should be eliminated, some they shouldn't. It depends on the, on the position. And those that have been vacant for a while and those that are not necessary at this point or people are not rushing to hire, those should be eliminated.
And are we not doing that?
And your managers have had those very conversations and evaluated exactly as Mr. Menuchaan has described, the positions that have been frozen and as a result vacant at the time that they take up their budgets and the positions that they believe they can eliminate on a permanent basis.
And we've seen several of those.
You've seen the list before. You've had conversations about the programs. We pointed out, for example, the reduction of programs that will eliminate that have a body in them as opposed to positions that are vacant. As a result, easier to, to cut.
Okay, well, using Mr. Ahern again as an example, since he's been tossed into the mix. Well, look, I think that's a perfect example of a position that could be eliminated for a number of years in the sense that he's done a tremendous job of bringing everything on budget, on time, et cetera, et cetera. He's supervising professionals that have been with this city for many years with the old Parks and Rec Department, and I'm sure they will rise to the occasion. And we have a new director, and I'm sure he can reconfigure that unit so that we don't have to. We eliminate that job for a couple of years. Nothing is forever. When things get better, then, and if there's a need for someone at that skill level, then they would come back to us and say, gee, we need to have, you know, this particular position brought back to, to the city staff. So, I mean, these are very difficult times, and every opportunity we get when someone leaves, sometimes it perhaps absolutely can't be done, a specific position that needs to be filled fairly quickly, and that's all there is to it. But whenever possible, the directors of the, of the different departments and the staff itself has to pull together and try to get the work done, maybe without a supervisor. Like I say, this is a perfect example in the sense that they're, they're architects. I'm sure most of them are licensed, they've been doing it for many years, and I'm sure this department can, you know, it'll feel Mr. Ahern's loss, but it'll be able to bring the, the projects.
On time and under budget.
On time and, and, yeah, under budget.
And that's exactly the kind of conversation we would have on every vacant position that's on, that ends up opening up in the course of the year. That is the conversation, that's the expectation for every department head to look at every position in that fashion. And so we estimate at the end of the year that that should produce at least $3 million, hopefully more. But I'm telling you, I think that if you, if you make that larger, you certainly can. But for example, I don't expect we're going to meet our target on employee concessions. We'll probably be under the $3 million number. We could be under by several hundred thousand dollars on the number. So where you may be off on one, hopefully you're conservative enough, you make up for it on another.
Well, in terms of the overall question that Mr. Najarian began the conversation with about keeping a cushion and how conservative we should be, I do believe that if we bring programs back into this budget, that we should find savings in the budget as well, and we should be as conservative as we can be because things come up unexpectedly throughout the year. $100,000 in a budget of almost $200 million is very little, and this is a time when we have to be lean, and all of us have our, our pet projects and the community has their pet projects. There's not one project that we could cancel or, or, I don't think we're really canceling any of them, but we could temporarily cancel that wouldn't upset somebody. And this, you know, it's going to be very difficult. You know, we, I'm very fond of the Explorers program. I think it's a great asset. I'd like to find a way to save it, but I think at the same time, it's my responsibility to find that saving somewhere else in the budget. Because if we all start asking for our pet projects to go back in to the budget, as, as admirable as that is, we're going to end up with a budget that's not balanced. And I think we need to be very cognizant of that today as we go through this process. Any other conversation before we move forward?
We'll just agree to disagree.
Okay.
If you'd like, then, should we start with a discussion of Chevy Chase Library?
Yes. I'm okay with that.
Cindy, if you would.
Madam Mayor, members of the council.
Cindy, now presented in a way where it's absolutely necessary to have that.
I think I'm between a rock and a hard place here.
Or the children's books.
Okay.
I know you can do it if you want to.
Cindy Cleary, Director of Libraries, and I'm here as a result of Councilman Menuchaan suggesting that we add $25,000 to the budget for the purchase of children's materials at the Chevy Chase Library. I, I gave you a, a brief handout, and some of it is a rehash, so I don't know how much you want me to go into it, but let me, let me just outline.
And just to be clear, I did, I did not, that suggestion did not come from the Director of Libraries, it came from me. So she wasn't lobbying me for additional funding, so we're clear.
Thank you.
I saw you both at lunch the other day. I know what happened.
No, not only was she not lobbying, I don't think that she necessarily recommends that in particular.
Right, right.
I'd like to hear, given that, Ms. Cleary, that you're the library expert, I'd like to hear what your recommendations are and where you think, if we were going to spend an additional $25,000, where you believe it would be best placed.
So would you like me to go straight to the recommendation, which I can do easily? On the handout, on page, let's see. Well, I, I think I'd like to go to handout number, or the page number six, just to give you some perspective on our budget.
And can I note, we need to stay away from Casa Verdugo, right, Mr. Howard?
Absolutely.
Yes, okay. So let's not, I think you can probably have it for display purposes, but we have to stay away from making any budgetary decisions about Casa Verdugo.
Okay.
That has essentially legally been put to bed in order to segment, effectively segment that conversation from the rest of the budget.
Okay. So as I said, I just want to give you a little perspective on our budget, on our book budget in particular for children's services. So this is our book budget for 10-11, and I, the total book budget is $529,000, as you can see at the bottom, the $390 and the $139. $390 of that is general fund and $139 is state. That is still up in the air right now, so we may end up with $390 come the next year. But this, what this slide does is it illustrates how much money we put into each, each neighborhood library for children's materials. So the total amount is $108,000 with $55,000 of that going into the children's room and down to the lowest number of $3,000 into Chevy Chase. And that, I've shown you statistics in the past about our circulation and our gate count, and really the distribution of funds is based on, on usage and number of people that visit.
And just to clarify, is that so that you don't have a situation where a resident in one area in one area or one library, that each, that you're unequal in terms of your distribution, so that a library that's used a lot less doesn't get a lot more assets per capita than another library?
That's correct.
Okay.
And it's a tough decision. I mean, we'd like to give more money to everybody, but we have limited dollars, and this is how we distribute it. So then, on slide eight, I think.
Slide eight.
Slide eight, yeah. You asked me options, if I did have $25,000 to spend. Option one is based on Councilman Manukian's request to look at materials for children at the Chevy Chase Library. If we were given 25,000, we would have to spend 5,000 on that and staffing, because it does cost money to buy books and select books and process books.
Can I ask a question regarding that?
Sure.
Why do you need 5,000? Can't you catalog it and do it at the Central Library and just take it over to?
For each book, yeah, but for each book, there's a cost related to getting it from the delivery point, when it's delivered to the library to being.
You're getting all these books already?
Well, each book has to be processed, it has to be labeled, it has to be cataloged, it has to be selected. I mean, there's a myriad of things that happens.
But people are doing that already. Do you need an additional 5,000?
Well, I mean, that's the way we calculate how much it costs. I mean, our, yeah. It's based on a.
Does that include putting the plastic cover on it?
Putting the plastic cover, putting the number on it.
And it'll open.
Making sure it's in the online catalog.
How do you staff for that? Is that hourly staff, full-time staff, mixture of the two?
It's a combination of both. We have catalogers that are professional librarians, and then we have processors that are library pages at, you know, $10 an hour, so.
Okay, so if you get more books, you could very well see your hourly, your costs ramp up.
Right.
Okay.
So, one way of looking at this 25,000 is as a one-time infusion of money for Chevy Chase. And if I were, if I were to choose for this money to be allocated to Chevy Chase, that's what I would suggest, as opposed to an ongoing budget for Chevy Chase, and that's based on.
That was the suggestion.
Yeah, okay. So, then, if you go to the next slide.
Can you just read, for people at home, the last paragraph?
Yes. Just once again, based on the numbers of what we give to other libraries, this 25,000 is about half, is about, is about half of the children's book budget allocated to the Central Library Children's Room. And we estimate that the children's room at Central Library probably serves close to 300,000 children a year versus about 5,000 people total at the Chevy Chase Branch Library. So, once again, hard decisions, but I have to make decisions based on the numbers, and that's what I've done over the last budget weeks. The option number two, if I were to give all the money to Chevy Chase, if I had that option, I would really suggest that we do it in a different way, because what we found at Chevy Chase is that most of the activity up there, the people that come in are drawn to the library because of programming, not necessarily just to come in to get a book. And so, if this was an ongoing $25,000, then I would suggest it be distributed between book budget, programming costs, increasing hours, live performances, and I can go over the specifics, but that would be the way I would distribute the funding.
Okay, you sold me.
Can I go to the next option? Then, option three and four, once again, as the Director of Libraries, I have to think about all of our libraries. So, if you were able to give the library $25,000, I would suggest that it be distributed to all of our libraries. And it could be distributed to all our children's libraries, which would mean, if you divided the money up, it'd be about 3,500 per library, which, if you look back to the budget figures, would be a nice shot in the arm for every library in Glendale and all our children in Glendale, rather than one specific library.
How many books does, how many books would that option buy, let's say, for any particular library? Because 25, I don't know how many.
Right, right.
How much, even 25,000. I was wondering, when we were, you know, after we, Mr. Manukian made his suggestion, and I seconded it, and I went home, and I thought, well, can that library even hold $25,000 worth of books? So, if we were to do option three, and you were to spend the $25,000 on children's books, how many children's books would each library receive?
Well, we estimated for Chevy Chase, if we spent the 20,000 at Chevy Chase, it'd be 800 to 1,000 books, maybe 1,200, depending on how you buy, whether it's lower-cost paperbacks or higher-cost hardbacks, it just depends on. So, I'd say 800 to 1,200, which could be distributed to all libraries.
And every library, you can check out any book, correct? Even if it's not there?
Right.
You can reserve a book, and it's brought up to that particular library?
And that's really the model that we were promoting for Chevy Chase, because we're only open two days a week. Our delivery van goes up there every day. I mean, so if you ordered a book on Monday, when we're closed, if you ordered it from the convenience of your home on Monday, and by Wednesday, when we are open, it would be available at the library. And a lot of people take advantage of that at Chevy Chase.
And by the way, I ordered my first book online from the library.
I like that.
Very interesting. So, it was taken out, though. I didn't realize an ebook could be checked out, but I'm on the waiting list.
Perfect. Well, there are many more to choose from, so.
Which option would you recommend if you had your druthers, knowing how passionate you are about the libraries?
I mean, I have to, as I said, I have to represent every library in Glendale, so my preference would be to distribute the money equally between all the libraries. I mean, we're underfunded in every library. We could always, not underfunded, but we could use more in every library, so to.
To be underfunded, it's okay.
So, to give each library 3,500, shot in the arm, and if you chose to children's services, or, you know, a combination of adult and children's services, I would be a happy camper. But, the other option, and I just want to bring this up, because Councilman Weaver brought it up, the possibility of a special tax for Glendale and for libraries. Other option that I put forth to you is defer making a decision about the 25,000, because in four to six weeks, I expect to come back to you with a report about a special tax. I will have to find funding somewhere to do a survey to test its feasibility. So, if you really want to think about the long-term benefit of $25,000, I can't think of any better way to invest our money if we ultimately decide to go for a special tax. So, between the two, short-term, I'd say the 3,500 distributed to all our libraries. Long-term, to be able to invest that money in testing the feasibility for a special tax, I think would serve our community very well. So, choices.
Any other, any questions from Ms. Cleary?
No, I'm amenable to option three. I think if all the libraries needed, especially with the children's books, I think, like you said, it'll be a shot in the arm for all the libraries, and that's fine.
Any other discussion?
I'd like to support the long-term. That's millions if it passes.
Well, I'm fine with option three, although I would like to be sure that, as much as we have volunteers at Chevy Chase, that we have a little bit of money to support them if we need to, especially with regards to children's programming. So, if, I don't know what kind of financial support they would need to make that program more viable, but I would like to see that, you know, whether it means keeping the library open a few more times, if there's a particular volunteer who wants to do a program at a time when we're not open, or whatever that is, if we can maybe reserve $1,000 or something out of that to make sure that they're able to do that. I just hate to see that if we have volunteers who want to do activities, I want to make sure that we can utilize that volunteer energy.
And let me address that, because we had someone from the community speak to you, I think, last week, and mention that we had a program called Traveling Zoo, and that program is actually supported by our Friends of the Library. So, our Friends of the Library will be, well, I have a meeting tomorrow, I expect that they will vote to give Chevy Chase its $500 for the coming year to support incidental expenses of our volunteers. Additionally, I mentioned that we had a book sale, we have $7,700 that has been, it was sponsored by the Friends, so it's in their bank account, but I plan over the next, to spread that over the next couple of years to help support paid performers and also our volunteer efforts. So, the volunteers have done a tremendous job up there, and we will support them as best we can with other means.
Question, am I allowed to comment on this, Mr. Howard?
If it's not.
Yes.
Stop me if I go too far.
Commenting on this is fine. If anybody gets into the.
What if I talk about library hours?
Library hours at Chevy Chase.
Only Chevy Chase?
You have to be careful. Essentially, Casa Verdugo has been put to bed, and the reason it has been, I mean, completely and finally put to bed, is to protect your interests and segment it off.
My only problem, one of the suggestions made by the librarian was that this funding be distributed throughout the entire library system, which would include Casa Verdugo. So, does that knock me out of this?
If the funding is going to be distributed, the answer would be yes.
And I'm not.
The intention of the council before was to put Casa Verdugo to bed. I really hated to resurrect the whole library issue for fear that it might drift into possible increased funding, or decreased funding, or some changes to Casa Verdugo that could have a potentially materially financial effect on your adjacent.
Well, my comments generally, without being specific, then I'm going to recuse myself in case this discussion gets any.
My advice is you wouldn't comment at all if it's going to have some potential influence on your colleagues involved in Casa Verdugo. That would be just my advice.
Well, can you make a comment that excludes Casa Verdugo?
About Chevy Chase?
Why don't you just make your comments and exclude Casa Verdugo from your comments?
My only comment is that during the presentation, the difficulty that was expressed by the librarian was not primarily the loss of funding for the books, it was the loss of hours that the branches were being imposed, that were being imposed on the branches. My suggestion is, is that let's forget about the book collection and put that into the extended hours for all the branches. Because she didn't come here and say, I don't have enough money for books. I'm sure that was a problem that she's facing, but the main difficulty, and which we heard from the community, was that these hours are being cut back in our libraries, not when we get there, we don't have any books to choose from, or there's no material to obtain. So, I'm thinking we're going, taking a turn towards, we're trying to solve a problem that isn't necessarily a problem.
Well, let me just ask Cindy, if you were to have $25,000, would you prefer that we gave you $25,000 and let you sort of allocate it as you think best? I mean, I did hear a concern from the community about children's books, so I would like to see at least some of that money, get some children's books for Chevy Chase. Now, I'm not going to tell you how many, I'm not going to tell you how much money you should put towards that, but if that was supposed to be a children's library, and the children are telling us, we'd like some more books, I don't know what that number is, 100, 200, but as far as the rest of that money, would you prefer that, if we were going to allocate another $25,000, we left it up to you and your staff to decide?
Yeah, that's fine, but I will address Councilman Najarian and say that when I presented our budget reductions, I wasn't thinking about increases, I was thinking about decreases. And so, what I said to you was, in my decreases, I wanted to make sure that my book budget wasn't cut, and I didn't suggest any cuts to the book budget. And that's because our book budget has stayed relatively the same as it was in the early 90s. So, my preference is to put more money into books than hours, because we really, I think we have a pretty good, we have essential hours at our branches. I would like to add hours at Central Library, I would like to open Central Library from 8 until 9. I closed, I took out that hour four days a week a couple of years ago, and I'm looking at ways of trying to increase those hours, but I think our branches are okay.
Mr. Manukian?
Just to be clear, this, my suggestion for the 25,000 did not stem from the Chevy Chase, I didn't know the Chevy Chase volunteers were going to be here. I had meetings with some individuals in the Chevy Chase area who expressed actually appreciation for keeping the library open, and they did not, although they preferred to have more hours, they said the thing that is lacking the most is children's books, and that children's books were being siphoned out of Chevy Chase Library to the other libraries. So, that's where my suggestion came from, not necessarily from, I didn't know they were going to be here, actually, that they had planned on making that suggestion whether they were here or not. So, it came from the community, the suggestion came from the community and from their concerns as they relay them to me during my meetings, so.
Okay, so that said, does anybody, so what is the consensus of the council? Is it $25,000 for books to be allocated equally?
Children's books, and I'm okay with that. I think there is a need for, you know, additional books, first of all, because there is a decrease in the number of books at all of our libraries, from 770 to 700,000 approximately. There's a need for some of these books, and especially with children's books, I think they're, they go a long way, and they get a lot of use out of them, so I'm okay with that.
So, we're taking the 25,000 off the 115,000 unbudgeted so far, correct?
So far, well.
If we were to vote for this, we.
I think you have two questions before you, and I haven't heard direction yet, but one is, do you allocate an additional $25,000 for the library, and then whether or not you want to direct where that money is going to be used, or leave it up to the librarian to decide how it's going to be used. And if it's books, she's given you her recommendation. If it's services, she's noted, going back to her original study session presentation, her philosophy has been, with the limited resources, put as much as you can in the Central Library, because that's the most kids who are least able to serve themselves. They need the most support. So, I think you have two questions. If indeed you're going to allocate additional money, then if so, if you want to direct that to any particular purpose.
You're taking 25 off 115, we're getting, the margin is closing in. We haven't heard from others who want additional things, so, in any case, if she got it, I'd rather leave it up to the librarian to decide how the best serve her customers. She knows more than we do, I think. I know.
I also do agree to leave it up to the librarian. However, we have to be careful in programming future general fund obligations. My concern is to have an infusion of a one-time $25,000 for books specifically, which will not generate additional liabilities for future, for future general fund obligations. I believe that a one-shot, shot in, one-time shot in the arm for the books, for the children's books, is, would be well worth it at this time.
And I would agree. If you increase hours, you may be here cutting them back next year.
Mr. Quintero?
I'm fine. Leave it up to the Director of the Libraries.
Yeah, I think a one-time allocation, I would like to leave it up to you as to how you allocate that, but I'd like to make sure that each library gets at least something, and that Chevy Chase gets, I think you've heard the community about Chevy Chase and the children's books, but I don't want to dictate the amount. I think that you have a much better grasp of what kind of books, and which library needs them the most.
Thank you.
And if you, I think that if you need some of that money for something else, if there's some small something at a library that you think is more important, I think you should have the flexibility of being able to do that.
Thank you.
My last concern is I don't want to delay your report on a special library tax.
We have a draft, ready to go.
Because the long-range applications there are significant, want to make sure, if we pass it, we'll get on the next election cycle, not get delayed.
Let's make sure that comes back in plenty of time, that we can discuss it.
Do you have one last piece before we leave the library? Cindy, can you briefly describe, the young lady who was here, volunteer, noted a number of things that either had been done or hadn't been done that she was expecting to occur at Chevy Chase, such as capital improvements. Can you describe again what's happening at Chevy Chase and what the residents can expect there?
Yeah, we have, we had capital improvement funding for 300,000 that was given to us as a result of.
You can't leave. Come back.
He's lost her.
I'm sorry.
Please bring Mr. Najarian back in. We're done talking, we've already made our consensus, we're just hearing a report at this right now.
Anyway, so, we had CIP funding at 300 this year, we've cut that back to 150 to address the concerns, or the, all the concerns in the CIP project. With that 150,000, we will be putting in new carpeting, some new lighting, we already put in a new kitchen, painting, just updating the site, and making it more accommodating for rental functions, like business meetings and perhaps filming opportunities. So, we will be going ahead with that. It was stalled because we were waiting to go through this budget process, but it was stalled. But now, we will go forward with that, and we'll work in concert with the Parks Department if they see opportunities of using that venue.
But to be clear, it was really directed toward being able to utilize the facility for rental, as it has been.
Yeah, well, yeah, and while we're also enhancing, I mean, a big part of it is to enhance the children's section, and so, you know, more playful furniture, more, you know, kid-friendly kind of environment. And that's a good chunk of the budget that we'll be allocating.
So, the bottom line is money is being spent at Chevy Chase?
Money is very definitely being spent, not only by general fund, capital improvement, the Friends of the Library. the Friends of the Library, you know, we try to encourage donations from the community. We have gotten a lot of donated books that we've added to the collection. So, if you're interested in Chevy Chase Library, anybody out there in the community, please make a donation to the Friends of the Library, and we'll make sure it goes to support Chevy Chase specifically.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Cleary.
Thank you.
Okay, did you want to talk about other programs?
I think we'd better, as much as I just soon move on to the Transportation Fund, but we have some other items sitting out there, like the elephant in the room. The Rose Float is an example, the Explorer Program in PD has been mentioned, the Pet and Star Programs in PD, and then clarification of the Basic Life Support Program costs that are in the Fire Department budget. I see Harold here, we can take any of those you'd like. Rose Float?
Let's start with Explorers.
Explorers?
So, you know, this is a program that I, like many, that I think all of us appreciate. It's something that's been very effective, as far as I can tell. I've even had emails from people who have offered to donate money to it. The question I have is, if you could go over the cost of that program, and whether there's anything else in your department that, at this point, you would give up? I mean, it was clearly on your list of programs to be cut, so, in your, I assume that it's not the highest priority. And as I said earlier, if I was going to suggest bringing, spending more money, I would like to find it somewhere in the budget. I'm not suggesting it has to be in the Police Department budget, but I wouldn't, you know, I would be willing to take another look at the programs that we're keeping, but I'd like a little more information about cost, your experience with the program, and anything else you can add that could be helpful to this discussion.
Madam Mayor, members of council, Ron DePampa, Police Chief, and concerning the Explorer Program, we have an annual commitment in our budget of about 18,500 annually. Currently, we're serving a total of 36 Explorers. That funding goes to pay the officers overtime that actually run and administer the program and do so beyond their normal duties. So, it is an extra duty that our personnel assume on an overtime basis. The Explorer Program has been a longstanding part of our department. It, in essence, actually serves as a first step in terms of getting young people from the community into the department and exposed to a career and profession in law enforcement. Historically, what we've done is then used the Cadet Program to serve as a next step for these young people to ascend to in pursuit of a career in law enforcement while they're completing their education. So, it's all been part in parcel with this attempt to kind of develop our own recruits over time.
Now, do you, do you feel that the cadets could still operate without the Explorer Program?
Well, unfortunately, they, one supports the other, but with the budget cuts we've experienced over the last three years, we do not have much left in our Cadet Program at all. I think currently, we have the, we did accommodate those cadets that were in the program, I think we have two remaining out of what was at one time, numbers that were in the area of 15 to 20. So, we really do not have a Cadet Program any longer. The funding was eliminated as part of our earlier reductions. So, with the Explorer Program currently, we've got a class of about 36 that we're working with now, and our intent is to transition out, finish that obligation, and then not initiate any new Explorer Academies based on this cut. Now, as we presented to you, the Explorers, the PAL Program, the STAR Program, really comprised what was left in terms of our discretionary programs. Anything beyond that, and we'll be looking in the area of priority, proactive, crime-fighting and public safety services to the community, and our recommendation is that we not go there.
Now, is PAL actually operating right now?
One segment of PAL is, we have, we have two component programs to the Police Athletic League effort. One is an equestrian program used for female participants to get involved in equestrian training and riding. The second is for male participants, and that was our boxing program. However, our boxing program is currently suspended, recently suspended, because the hourly coordinator that was employed by CDBG Funds to run the program has taken another job, so that position is vacant. Secondarily, we operate the boxing ring out of the old police facility, and we will be losing that facility here shortly as that building is renovated for other city services.
When was it suspended?
It was suspended approximately three weeks ago.
And how many people did you have who you're serving?
In, with all of PAL, we were servicing about 30, and there's, within boxing, there's anywhere from 12 to 15 participants in that particular program.
Now, the YMCA told me that they're in discussions with you, or are going to be in discussions with you about taking that, about helping out with that project?
And that's precisely correct. We're, all these programs contained in STAR and PAL, we're looking to try to find ways to transition it to community-based programs, something that then we can support, obviously, to a lesser role to some degree, but still have involvement and support with those. So, we're looking at those transitional options currently.
And is that an option for the cadets and for Explorers?
Well, that, there may be options there. Obviously, cadets and Explorers are very Police Department-specific, and so, our options may be limited in that regard. But obviously, these are, you know, both with the Explorers and the cadets, this is something that, you know, we want to, as soon as feasible, maybe regenerate, because it has such an important role in terms of our long-term recruitment strategies. So, as times and our economic condition improves, this is, these are two very important programs, we'd want to regenerate as rapidly as possible, and they're very easy to regenerate. They don't require a whole lot of overhead or planning to get them up and running once again. We just need funding for police officer overtime. Now, one factor also is part of this consideration, is that we've also had a significant reduction in CDBG funding support for both these programs. About 3,000 for the STAR Program, and 17,700 in the PAL Program from CDBG reduction. So, not only would we have to continue our current budget allotment, but we'd have to find a way to fund that missing gap as well if we were to keep these.
Thank you.
Okay, specifically on the PAL Boxing Program, I also spoke to the Director of the Y, and in fact, he does have a dedicated room that I visited in the past, that could be, that could, he could put the ring in there, the heavy bags and so forth. There's also a PAL-style boxing program in Burbank, and the gentleman who runs that program is interested in participating in our program. One of the reasons I think the numbers went down on the boxing program was the location. I mean, who wants to go into the basement of a old police building? When it was at Adams Middle School, and then later on, at the other middle school, it was a great, great location, and I think kids were much more interested in participating. But overall, I mean, I just find it unconscionable that with the multi-million dollars in this budget, that we can't redirect some money to have these programs continue. I think PAL specifically, and that boxing specifically, if we cite it at the YMCA, I think they'll be able to raise money from private interests, from people doing business here in the City of Glendale, corporations, et cetera. I think we're going to make that a success. Then I also think there's kind of too many silos. I mean, some of the senior Explorers, well, if there's only two cadets left, but some of the senior Explorers, maybe we can also work them into the PAL Program and into the STAR Program. They're obviously young people that are headed in the right direction, and mostly looking for law enforcement careers, so I think they'd be a real good, be a sort of good mentorship with some of the kids going through PAL and STAR. But I, I mean, I just, the idea that we're going to completely eliminate these programs, I just think we have to be creative and we can find a way to fund them, and, you know, I mean, I'm just going to be quite frank, I'm not going to support a budget that's going to just eliminate these programs. I don't think it makes any sense at all. We can come up with some program that, either working through community services, or how we do it, we just have to think about how we do it, but I think we need to continue to do that. These are the kids that are most in need. I mean, these aren't wealthy kids, these are kids that either self-identify as wanting to come into these type of programs, because they know they're in trouble, or their parents bring them, or sometimes the police themselves kind of do the referrals. So, we shouldn't abandon these young people. I think it makes any sense at all.
Chief, is the equestrian program a lot more money to operate than the boxing program? Given that you have more specialized equipment?
You know, we, Madam Mayor, we do get a lot of support from a riding club that's in partnership with that group. I wouldn't say that it's necessarily more costly, I think they're pretty equitable in terms of both programs. Both are minor costs, but obviously, it is overtime officers for, overtime hours for an officer to be involved on a consistent basis.
What if a girl wanted to box, as some girls do now, and what if a boy wanted to go riding, which a lot of boys do? Why do we have this segregation, that one's for girls and one's for boys?
Well, we haven't had that request, and I'm sure it's something that we could consider if we had that occur, but as of now, they've been pretty much gender-specific.
Najarian?
Chief, what is the cost of an overtime hour for the individuals that run these programs?
The, I'll have to turn to my budget. What's that? A total overtime hour cost for a police officer is $120 an hour.
No offense, but that seems, I'm sure they're doing a great job, but that just seems really incredible, and I'm wondering if there's not a way to get some cost savings by perhaps not having a overtime hour counted there, perhaps a reserve officer or someone else? I mean, 120 divided by, I mean, pick one of those and divide it by 120, I mean, I know attorneys out there that aren't charging 120 an hour. And it just seems like it's a lot of, not the fault of the officers, they have their requirements, once they reach that certain amount, that they've got to go in overtime, but that's just a burden that, I mean, if we were to get someone at $30 an hour, $25 an hour, just imagine the cost savings that this could be achieved. So, I just want to throw that out there, that, you know, so much of it is this very expensive overtime hours.
And, Councilman Najarian, it is very true, and not, and we try to even allow the officers to do as much on-duty as possible, but obviously, that takes them away from crime-fighting duties in the community. But the issue with reserve officers is that to run these programs and have an effective mentorship relationship with the kids, you need a degree of consistency, so the same people are involved, they're getting to know the kids, they're interacting with the kids on a regular basis. So, to do so with reserves or volunteers is, would be very, very difficult. So, we are left, unfortunately, we don't have the sworn staffing to commit full-time people to functions such as this. We simply have to do it on an overtime basis.
Do you think any of your officers would volunteer any of their time for these programs?
Madam Mayor, I think they would. I, again, I think, you know, we have people that are very, very interested in the welfare of the kids of this community, and would certainly do that, but again, it takes, it takes consistent program participation to make it work. So, I don't know that, number one, we can depend on that, or compel any of our employees to keep a program running through volunteering their time on a consistent basis.
If I can add, if you're compelling them to volunteer their time, they can't volunteer their time, because you'll be obligated under the Fair Labor Standards Act if it has a benefit to the city.
No, but I would like to know, if we were to ask them, and I'm asking now, if there's any officers out there who'd be willing to volunteer their time, I'd like to hear about it at some point while we're doing this budget, because it may be the difference between these programs surviving or not surviving.
We first need to have legal and HR look at whether or not even putting out that call would put us in a position of not being able to utilize them on a voluntary basis. It's a very slippery slope.
It has to be a service that's different than they would provide as police officers. For example, we do have officers that might volunteer on straight time for jail, because jailer is a non-sworn position. So, there's an issue we'll have to look at.
Yes, it's not...
Sure that we're not just, even though it's voluntary, if we push them into that position, they still may be entitled under the Fair Labor Standards Act overtime.
I'm not suggesting pushing anybody in, but I'd be curious if there's any officers who would be willing to do that.
Well, and I think that's part of, you know, coming up with some creative solutions. I also like Mr. Najarian's idea of a reserve officer. We don't know unless we ask. There may be a reserve officer that likes working with kids and would like to do that. The key is obviously a good location, and I think we've got a great location at the Y. The Director of the Y seems very enthusiastic. The former world champ that actually put the boxing program together at the Civic, he's very interested. There's another young man who's been quite successful, who's a former PAL boxing proponent. He's the one that came here years and years ago when we first talked about cutting the program. He's interested. So, I think we can save this, and I'm just as interested in saving the equestrian program, because I think that is working out very well. That particular police officer, I think she's doing a wonderful job. Maybe she doesn't need to devote that much time to it, maybe we can find another counterpart to kind of lessen the, lessen the financial obligation, but we need to save these programs. I'm just convinced that it makes absolutely no sense for us to do otherwise.
Mr. Starburg, is there a way that we can put this suspension of these programs or on hold while we look at alternatives of continuing them under different models and bringing the cost down?
Well, you can come July 1, though, unless you continue to operate on the current budget, the chief won't have funding. So, you know, my suggestion would be is we not count on those savings, but we look for other alternatives. You've got 18,4 in Explorers, essentially 14,5 in PAL, and $9,200 in STAR. So, that's 32, about $40,000 worth of programs there.
Well, and Explorers, I'm putting under, I know that'll be more...
That included Explorers.
Okay, that included Explorers.
It was 18,4 for Explorers, 14,6 for PAL, and 9,200 for STAR.
Well, the only thing is, if you budget for it, is there still that incentive to go out and find the savings? I hope that there would be...
Well, the other way to do it is you budget for a portion of the year, which gives them time to find some other alternatives. So, you could budget for a quarter, or four months, or whatever you think you might need.
I'd also like to bring Mr. Duran to the...
Which one?
Duran.
Yes, Duran?
I'd like to ask him about the CDBG, because I meant, you mentioned there was a cut in funding and so forth. I know you haven't had time to repair, but just, to prepare, but just off the top of your head, in terms of CDBG, where are we? Are there any unexpended funds that could possibly come into play?
This is Mayor Friedman, members of the City Council. At this point, all of the CDBG social service funding is allocated to projects. One thing I would like to point out, if the STAR and PAL Program, or models or versions of those programs are transferred to the YMCA, the YMCA would have to sign a grant agreement with the City of Glendale, and all the requirements and prequalifications for nonprofit organizations would have to kick in. So, we would probably partner with the... have to kick in. So we, we would probably partner with the police department to have those discussions with the Y to make sure they fully understand what those requirements would be to begin to operate those programs. Right now, all the funds are allocated.
Was STAR and PAL funded at all?
Yes.
For those amounts that the chief talked about?
Correct.
So they received last than they have in previous years?
Correct, as, as most programs did.
Jimminen.
There was, if I remember it correctly, there was a CDBG program that did not expend the money and did not want it and returned it back. Am I remembering it correctly? And you said that you would allocate it for next year's program? How much was that?
It was reallocated in the current year. One New Horizons, for example, they, right, they withdrew their, their funding for their childcare program.
And how much was that?
I think that was $45,000.
And it was reallocated already?
Yeah. It was, it was given back in, oh, I stand corrected. It was, it was given back in January, so it was one half of 45,000, so $22,000. And that was reprogrammed.
How, how can it be reprogrammed so fast?
Well, the timing worked out that we had a CDBG advisory committee scheduled in January, and so we reprogrammed the funds, because the funds have to be spent by June 30. So we looked at all of the existing childcare programs and reprogrammed it to other childcare programs.
So there is nothing left in CDBG that can be programmed for this, for this, for these programs?
No.
You sure?
Well, they, they already have.
You want me to go through your books?
They already have CDBG funding allocated. If, if you're asking additional CDBG funds, there isn't anything available.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
No, I, I agree with Mr. Quintero, actually, in terms of these programs, they're invaluable for the community, they're invaluable for the kids that they serve, and $40,000 in a, in a budget of 180, 200 million dollars is, maybe we can get the GWP to transfer $40,000 extra.
Or redevelopment.
Yeah.
If we had the water transfer, we'd do that.
I'll vote for that, yeah. Or they can sponsor it and advertise during that time.
Mr. Starburg, do you have enough direction from us that there's a desire to, okay, so
there's a desire to maintain these programs, explorers, PAL, and STAR?
Okay.
But to look at models that would bring the cost down?
Do you want to leave the numbers as they are on the budget? Do you want six months of funding, full year of funding as requested, or what?
I would like to start with six months of funding and give them really an incentive to go out and, and find costs, serious cost savings. And I think that Mr. Quintero's idea of using reserve officers is a good one. I'd like to, for us to really look into that and not assume that it's not possible.
Chief, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I meant Mr. Negerian's idea.
The number in your budget, did that anticipate the reduction in CDBG funding?
No, it, Mr. Starburg, it, it does not. There's a reduction of 2,800 for STAR in CDBG, and for PAL, there's a reduction of 17,788. So those gaps would need to be made up as well. That money funds the civilian, part-time coordinators for those programs.
So my guess is if you leave all of the money in, that may get you six months, given what's been lost to CDBG.
I would like to have a more detailed report about the Equestrian program in particular, because I'm just, I know how expensive anything having to do with horses can be, and I understand that the program, where is the program physically located?
They, it, they ride at a riding club out in the Santa Clarita or Acton area.
Yeah, I mean, are we paying a police officer overtime to drive them?
Absolutely.
That distance? Yeah, I'm uncomfortable with that, and I know that there's a similar program that operates in Los Angeles, right, right next door. And if there's a way we can piggyback and, or buy into that program, but to pay a police officer overtime to drive an hour each direction, is, as wonderful as that officer is, and as great as the program is, I just think we can find better ways of doing this more locally.
Madam Mayor, what's.
I would be comfortable with taking the Equestrian program out until we really look at the numbers and leaving the other ones for now. And I, because I, I just want to see what, really how that all breaks down. I'm, I'm not comfortable, you know, funding that program in this budget environment with those kinds of, until we really get a handle on some of those financial details.
Madam Mayor, we'll bring you back a more in-depth analysis of the Equestrian program. I know part of the reason they are out there is because of the partnership they have with the riding club that accommodates and assists them within, with the presentation of the program.
So what's your direction?
Does that mean that the program would stop effective July 1?
It would if there's no funding.
And how many, how many people are in that program now?
I, I believe they have about 15, that, 15 young ladies that participate in that program.
No, I, I'm not for that. Let's go ahead and, and continue it. I agree. I didn't realize it was all the way up in Santa Clarita. I thought it was a little closer sort of Sunland. But anyway, yeah, if we can bring it closer to Los Angeles, closer to Glendale, whether it's the Equestrian Center here or Riverside or Sunland.
I thought it was here, actually. I didn't realize it was.
So can we get some of that information maybe before the funding runs out for it, so that we can make a decision on where or the other?
What about the STAR program? How many kids does the STAR program, what is the?
Currently, in, in the STAR program, we have 17.
17 kids?
Correct.
There are no funds, the funds are completely expanded every year? Or is the Equestrian? Yeah?
Correct. We, we have funded this year 9,200 for that. In addition, we depend on the CDBG funding to pay for the, the part-time coordinator on that program.
You've, these programs have lost about $20,000 in funds from the CDBG cuts, the two programs. If you leave this current money in the budget, the chief will have about enough money for six months of programming under the current program structure, which means at some time in the next six months, you'd have to find some alternatives, or the programs would lose their funding.
So where does that bring us in terms of our, that $100,000 cushion that's now being whittled down?
That makes 31, roughly $40,000 among those three programs.
And then the $25,000 for.
25 is 65 out of the 115, so you've got $50,000 remaining balance.
Okay, so that's doable if we do not throw anything else in and are okay with a $50,000, with a very small.
You do have one more item on your list to talk about, however.
Oh, that's right, we still have the Rose.
Which does happen to equal $50,000.
What is it?
That's ironic.
Rosebowl.
Oh, Rosebowl.
Okay.
Is that the consensus, then? Do we leave this funding, but anticipating without the CDBG, CDBG funding, there's about six months' funding for these three?
Right, so that gives them six months to find.
Now, I'm taking it the explorers continues at the full amount, the 18,4, and then the, my note about, about six months really refers to the PAL and the STAR programs, right, chief?
Yes, sir, that, that is correct. And but, but again, just a reminder that the program coordinator for the PAL boxing side has taken another job. That position is vacant, so we're going to have to recruit and hire for that in order to continue that program.
For which program, PAL?
That's the PAL boxing.
We have nobody in-house that could, that could do that?
Madam Mayor, no, I do not.
So something has to be done anyway. I mean, something has to be done if the program's going to continue, because you've lost the key person. So.
That's why I mentioned that there is a key person at Y, at the YMCA in Burbank that's very interested in the position.
We'll pursue that.
Okay, so those, those three programs are about $40,000. 32, actually 41,000 and change, call it 42,000. So you're at about $50,000. Done with? Is that the consensus on those?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, you have consensus on that. Thank you. So let's move on to.
Want to take up the Rose float? I think that's the last item on the list.
Okay.
Before we get to transportation, for which we'll have about 20 minutes remaining for the transportation.
Yeah, Fire to the.
Is there anybody?
That's right, Fire, I'm sorry.
Is there anybody that needs to leave at 3:00? You do? No? Can we go longer than 3:00? Are you okay with that?
How many hours?
4:30, I'm okay.
Okay.
We planned on, we planned on devoting two hours to transportation, hoping we get through it in two hours.
Let's see how far we can go, but can I, you know what, I'll just send Linda an email. I have a 3:30 appointment, and I'll ask her to move it.
Okay, which one would you like to take up next?
Let's do Fire first and then Transportation.
Chief?
Oh, no, sorry, Rosebowl first. Rosefloat.
Okay, Rosefloat first.
If, if I can give you a running total update, we've got, after subtracting out the differences, off the 115,000, we're at about $48,000 left.
But I understood that they decided not to propose the Rosebowl.
No, but I think Mr. Weaver has some other suggestions.
Let's, let's first hear what the current situation is and then what options we might have.
Jess, do you want to give us an update? I'm sure Mr. Weaver will add color commentary as we go along.
Mayor Friedman, members of the city council, with regard to the Rosefloat and, and the budget, the last direction we received from the city council during a previous budget study session was to see if we could use economic development funds to pay for the city's $50,000 that goes towards the contract to build the Rosefloat, and then to approach the Glendale Rosefloat Association and confirm their commitment for raising $50,000 to make up the other half of the cost to build the Rosefloat, and also to approach the Rosefloat Association about the feasibility of them assuming the staff coordination that it takes to, to get us from all the pre-planning throughout the year up to all of the activities leading directly up to the New Year's Day Rosefloat, and then bringing the float back to Glendale to display it on Brand Boulevard. The Rosefloat Association did have a board meeting last Monday night. They were made aware of, of your direction as it related to the status of the Rosefloat budget. The Rosefloat Association determined that they, they do not have the capacity to assume any staff coordination responsibilities, and they further voted not to sponsor the Rosefloat in 2012, that they could not commit to their customary $50,000 contribution. And so they decided not, not to be involved in sponsoring the 2012 Rosefloat. We've, subsequent to that, I had a meeting with the community development director and the assistant director, and we talked about the use of economic development funds. And it's possible that if we use the economic development funds, there may be some slight modifications to the way we present the float if and when it were to be built. And I don't want to speak for them, so they can give you an update as it relates to their ideas with regard to that. But that's, that's the current status of the Rosefloat.
Weaver?
Well, I could, yeah, I can say some things now. I've been, I was on the Rosefloat board beginning back in the 1980s. The Rosefloat Association by themselves could only raise $2,000 or $3,000 a year, maybe 5,000. In 2001, 2002, when Mr. Yosefin was on council, he tried to end Cruise Night and the Rosefloat. And I was pushed to prevail on keeping both of those. And Mr. Yosefin says, well, the Rosefloat Association ought to pay half the cost. So the magical $50,000 number came up. Knowing there was not a way to do it within having teas and getting discounts on, on meals at restaurants, I created Draymir Roses. That became hugely successful over eight years. It's the organization, as a subcommittee, provided the funding to the parent organization, the Glendale Rosefloat Association, which then in turn contributed the 50,000 to the, to the city for the float. Because of the economy, the last three years, I did not do Draymir Roses. Hard to ask restaurants to bring free food in this kind of an economy. It's also harder to get sponsors. So I've been waiting out the economy. So the Rosefloat Association's a point where they just don't have any more money to give. When I, see, how should I phrase it? I found out about the list of things that the city was doing, over $30,000 to support the float, and through a roundabout way, I got a list of those. I've talked to different staff members and the Phoenix Decorating, and the 31,000, I sincerely believe, can be reduced to 3,000 to 4,000 max. That means some changes. What you do, that's doable in terms of city costs. Based on the free publicity that we have received in the paper since the Rosefloat Association announced their decision, coverage is on a lot of the TV channels, a number of calls coming in, and I am absolutely convinced we will be able to raise the $50,000 for that. And at the time, I did not know that the, that we were telling the Rosefloat Association they also had to take on the cost of doing the staff work of 30,000. I mean, that would mean 80,000 they would have to spend a year, where back in the first 80 years or more of the float, they were spending, oh, $4,000 or $5,000 maybe. The owner, the president of Glendale Federal Savings and Loam at the time was a big supporter of the Rosefloat, their ability to fund was much better. That went down, and things cycle, and we're back to the point now of going the other way. Like I said, I'm convinced we'll raise the 50,000. I'm convinced we can reduce those costs to take care of things as far as putting the float on the street. On an annualized basis, we do bring in over 600 people to decorate the float, most of them students, ranging in age from eighth grade through college and post-college graduates. They get their community service hours. A number of kids put in 60 to 80 hours a year. Total about 6,000 man-hours of effort to put it on. We're self-decorated, and we're the only one that's totally self-decorated now at the Rose Palace. In all ways, it's been good. It's been good for exposure, and I think it's been good for the city. The interest that is being, right now, is very valuable. I, I can only guess that, you know, you have to know how to market something like this. By writing that one article on the front page of the news press, all of a sudden, four television channels at least are running it, and people are making calls in. So if you market it right, convinced you can do it. We've got to go out, and we will be looking at corporate offices that are here in Glendale. We have a number of them. It's their float, it's the Glendale float. I think if we keep the float in and continue 98 years as credit tradition, and after 98 years to say its goodbye just seems the wrong way to go. So I hope, I hope we'll keep it in.
Any comments?
I have a, I have a question. What ideas do you have or do you have for raising 50,000? Is that what we're talking about, raising 50,000?
That's, that's for me.
Well, let me, let me.
Yes, he's not doing it.
If I can, it's, it's whatever support activities are needed, and maybe the support activities can be taken over by somebody, but there is some staff time, especially if the association isn't there, that's going to be required to manage this, not to mention going out and raising the money. And then you have a contract that needs to be signed before the end of this fiscal year.
And what is the full cost of that contract? We're talking about $50,000, but that's not the total cost.
98, 98.
Madam Mayor, the contract this year, or for the 2012 float, is, is $99,000. The contract's on my desk. I did speak with the float builder last Thursday, and he said we, we could, we, we have about another month before it becomes critical to, to commit or not.
Now, the hope was that the association would take over whatever handling has been there. I know Mr. Weaver disagrees with the value of that, but the association would take over all associated activities and then would raise funding. So our comment would be, to actually be responsible for the contract, but essentially $50,000 with no other staff activity or support.
Jim, I've, I've gone through the entire list here, and I've talked with the police, I've talked with Phoenix Decorating, I've talked with others. In the two hours I've had since I got out of the airport meeting today, that's when I said, we can do this for 2, 3,000, I mean it. There's a lot of things in here that don't have to be done. Taking things like. Taking things like budgeting for distributing T-shirts, that was a Glendale Rose Float job to do. It's only because they didn't do it one year that George Chapman says, "We'll do it." Now, the city doesn't have to do the T-shirts. If the Rose Float or whoever's doing it can't raise the money, then there's no T-shirts. Yes, you're going to have to have police escort. Yes, but I got two police officers taking the riders over on January the 1st. They don't have to take them over there on the 31st. They're capable people of driving over to where the judging is done. That saves costs. And right up and down the list of things, I read off some of these to owner of Phoenix Decorating and says, "What do you mean? We do that. City doesn't do it." Right up and down the list. I'm not BSing here. I'm talking fact, or I wouldn't be standing here saying it. I didn't believe the numbers before, and I don't believe them today.
Ms. Friedman? But look, I'm still not clear. Talking about part of the money for this float coming from, directly from the redevelopment agency under the economic development criteria, and then the other half, let's say, would come from fundraising activities?
Mayor Friedman, Councilmember Quintero, the way it works now is the city budgets $100,000 in the department budget, and we pay for the building of the Rose Float. At the end of the year, shortly after the new year, the Rose Float Association provides the city with its $50,000 contribution, then that gets credited back to the account, to the budget. That's currently the way it works. So I imagine in order to execute this $99,000 contract, we'd actually have to have the full $99,000 in the account in order to make the down payment, then rely on a fundraising entity to reimburse the city at a later time.
From a budgetary standpoint, we would budget the $99,000 as an expenditure. We would recognize a revenue, but again, it's a plan. We'd recognize a revenue for $50,000, and then if the revenue doesn't come in, then the general fund ends up eating the difference. Mr. Quintero, you asked about economic development. A question was posed the beginning of this conversation as part of our staff work. Could this become an economic development tool as a result? Redevelopment pay for it? Now, that presumes we have redevelopment after the next couple of weeks, and we think that yes, it could be justified. If you decided you wanted to do it as an economic development tool, it could be justified.
But wait a second. If we sign this contract and do that, and we don't have redevelopment or don't have funds in redevelopment because the state takes all of the money for redevelopment, that then leaves the general fund holding the bag, right?
Yes, yes. Or if you do have redevelopment and the fundraising doesn't take place, the general fund would end up making up the difference. The point I'm getting to is your economic development staff, in all candor, has to tell you that although it can be a legitimate expenditure for economic development, their view is the $50,000 could be spent more wisely someplace else. Now, that's your decision to make, but it could be utilized for that purpose. If it was up to them, this wouldn't be their first choice for spending $50,000 of economic development money.
But this is 98 years. It's history in this city. What other thing do we have in this city that has lasted 98 years? Before any of us were born, and then to say it 98 years, well, it's better to spend money elsewhere?
Well, I don't.
Where's our tradition? Anything relating to our history, Jim? Days of the Dugald Parade, gone. Everything that I grew up, gone virtually, except the Rose Float.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Weaver, I'm not fighting the concept, believe me. I too do not feel good about ending Glendale's long tenure in the Rose Parade. But I have to be candid with you about the feeling of your staff as an economic development tool. I'm telling you legitimately, if you choose, it can legally legitimately be utilized for that purpose, and we can rely on redevelopment, and frankly, that type of funding could continue beyond the elimination of redevelopment because you will probably generate some post-redevelopment non-tax increment revenues that you could draw on. But I've got to be candid with you about your staff's views, and I completely agree with Mr. Weaver. I hate to see the longstanding effort end, but your staff has said if we had $50,000 to spend on economic development, we think there's other things we could do that would be more effective than the Rose Parade.
You can do what you said earlier. We could take $50,000 more out of the water and power transfer. Oh, we could take $50,000 additional redevelopment transfer. We could take $50,000 on our reserves. I mean, I've sat here for the last hour and a half, and I've listened to us add into the libraries, add back in the pound, the star, and everything. Come on. I'm going to make the same statement to Mr. Quintero, mate. If the Rose Float isn't put in, I'm not voting for this budget. Yes, I'm not objective. This is my town. I was born in. I want to save that Rose Float. Millions and millions of people watch it. I'm proud of that in our city. I'm proud of the kids that work on it every year. Simply throw it under the bus for $50,000 out of how many multi-million dollars that you've all mentioned, my colleagues have mentioned? No. You won't have my, I will not vote for the budget.
Next question I have is about the fundraising. We've already established half of the $99,000 required. How about the fundraising? Who's going to do that? How does that?
Different people. We're getting calls from people that want to contribute money. I've already asked Mr. Starbird, can we set up an accountant in the city, and Mr. Howard, or people that donate money that goes into a Rose Float account? I've been told, yes, you can do that. That's one source.
Like city's Rose Float account? The city will have a Rose Float?
Yeah, the money goes directly into that account, or and is transferred in, I don't know, when it gets there, and they make three payments to, on the float. Three payments, initial and then two others, until it's completed. And you don't need the money in before May of 2012 to have all the money in. The other way is going out to corporate sponsors or whatever.
Has Mr. Starbird committed to a donation?
No.
I do need to say, all of that is correct. I don't think you can assume your staff is going to go out and raise the money, though.
No.
I don't want to put the staff in a position of going out into the community and trying to raise $50,000 for this effort, and certainly not your redevelopment agency staff. This shouldn't become a redevelopment agency activity where they're put in a position of going out and raising $50,000. I think Mr. Weaver's concept is somehow there's still going to be a community effort to raise $50,000. As I noted to him over the weekend, we had a brief conversation about this, because I think he's confident that through his and other efforts, it can be done. I wish the Rose Float Association would remain in the current capacity, and somehow through additional support by individuals, they would become the fundraising arm, and whatever coordination is required of that, they'd do it. I think it puts the city in a difficult position while we're asking the staff to go out and essentially twist arms in the community to support an effort like this. Puts us in a difficult position.
Okay.
Mr. Ngerian?
Let me add this. I've gone down the past month and asked people, would they contribute? I've got pledges over 20,000 already. Probably another 20,000 I can get within the next month or two. The money going in probably to the Dreaming of Roses Incorporated account, because when I put that together, that is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. Glendale Rose Float Association tried and tried and tried to obtain a 501(c)(3) status and could not do it. I was able to do it. All that money would go in there, it'd be tax deductible to every corporate sponsor, and then every penny of that, my treasurer, CPA, would then sent on to the city. No money's extracted, not a penny. So I'm confident if I can get 20,000 in less than a month, I'm working on another 20, I can certainly get 10 more in the next six, eight months. That's why I say I'm confident we'll have the money. The city, I think, cares enough about it.
Friedman?
Yes, Mr. Ngerian?
Well, no, let me say point blank. I'm absolutely, positively, under no circumstances going to go back to that situation where dreaming of roses is taking money from the public and then transferring that money to the city of Glendale. Either we do it as a nonprofit, or we do our own nonprofit, or, but I'm not going back to that.
Mr. Quintero?
Mr. Ngerian's had his hand up for a while. Mr. Ngerian?
Fine, I don't care.
I think it's great that we have such enthusiasm for the float by Mr. Weaver, but I am concerned that we fall back into what we as a council were criticized for so extensively perhaps three, four years ago, and that was the situation that Mr. Quintero is describing, where a particular council member takes such ownership of the particular event that there appears to be undue influence placed on certain members of the community. We passed a regulation, did we not, that in fact, if you are a council member and you go out and you demand that you be payment or donation to my particular cause, I think this sets us back to where we were, and perhaps this was some of the reason that Mr. Yusefin wanted to limit the, you know, the operations of.
I have to fill out a form, "At the behest of," and the money can come directly to the city.
But I think it gives the wrong impression, Dave, is when one of us is so enthusiastic and so committed to this, that we go out and we speak to any one of these large entities that are able to provide chunks of thousands of dollars, that in the event that they have something that has to come to the city, not that we are going to trade our votes, but the impression to the public is that, oh, well, they gave 10,000 to the Rose Float, you approved their, you know, their extra two floors on their building. It's got to be completely separate from the council. This is where we were, this is where we were four years ago, and it was a bad situation, and it has, in the last four years, I think we've raised the Rose Float to a certain level of propriety and credibility. I hate to slip back down. I hate to lose it for another year, but the Rose, Tournament of Roses itself suspended itself for several years throughout the 40s as a result of World War II. If things get better, we can do it again next year, but I hate to put the pressure on any one council person to commit to getting the funding. It leads to a very bad situation. I just can't support it if that's the way we're going to do. We're going to tell you or anyone else to go out there and get that money unless it's a completely separate group unaffiliated with any particular council member.
Well, I will not vote for the budget then. I'm sorry. You've got what you guys want. I have to fill out a form that says "at the behest of." I'm the guy that takes the heat from Vanguard after having done it. You can draw your conclusions if I'm in the pockets of. I haven't got any money yet. Fine, I'm sending it directly to the city. But as a resident of this community and a council member, I have a right to go out and make my pitch for people to help this community. And if you don't think I have that right, that's fine. You take it out after 98 years, but I will not vote for this budget. That's my decision.
Well, you can make a pitch to the people you're soliciting funds for, in my opinion, as long as the money goes directly to the city Rose Float.
That's fine.
And not through the dreaming of roses.
That's fine. That is absolutely possible, because I already checked it out.
I'm not sure that solves the problem.
Well, no, you're making a good point.
You know, the money, I mean, there's two things here. There's one is the possible misappropriation of the funds, and no one is saying that is occurring or could occur with a separate account. But it's the undue influence that a council member can, I mean, let's be serious. You don't think I could go to any particular business? I couldn't go to Accura of Glendale and say, "I want $10,000 today. And by the way, we're revamping the South Brand parking situation." So I'm not tying those two together, but, you know, we've had a Rose Float for the last 99 years, and it would break my heart if we don't get 10,000 from you. I think that is an improper situation to place anyone on this council or any particular member of the community. And that's all I'm going to say. Well, that's not all I'm going to say. To vote against an entire budget that we've spent weeks and weeks trying to work out, there are criticisms clearly in the community and valid criticisms, but to say that because I'm not getting my float or I'm not getting my particular project, to say I'm against the whole budget, I don't think is a proper exercise of our duties as a city council.
Mate, I've already heard that twice today, sitting right here. Can't use that one on me. Heard that twice already.
I'm using it on everybody, Dave, not just you.
I heard it once.
I'm using it on everyone. Anyone that holds out one particular project and holds the whole budget hostage is not properly executing their duty.
If I get other people to go out and make these calls and get people in, is that okay? Or it's not directly from me?
That was my concern, Dave, yes. That's different.
Well, I can get.
But you've already said you've got 20,000, and with a few more phone calls, you can guarantee you'll have 50,000.
I said pledges, but that doesn't mean I'm going to, well, maybe it does, but I could go to other people, give them names, and let them make calls.
Well, I'm curious.
People are laughing at this. You all think it's funny.
No one's laughing.
Well, I'm seeing it out there.
But I'd like to know what some of the other members of council think.
Not funny.
You're on the spot, but.
Well, I wasn't here during that hall, and I do understand Mr. Weaver's point. I think the Rose Float is a tradition. However, there were allegations and perceptions in the community which were not, which did not reflect positively on the Rose Float itself, actually. But I have another approach, which, in my opinion, we, Mr. Starbird might disagree with me again, and Mr. Elliott, but I think the savings from our eliminated employee, or not employees, eliminated positions, instead of $3 million, we'll allocate $3.2 million and fund the Rose Float an extra $50,000 and not worry about raising funds.
Well, I concur with you on that. I mean, I, let me tell you one little.
I agree with you in terms of we should keep the Rose Float.
Look, let me tell you one little story. When I started Dreaming of Roses the first time, I looked for somebody that could go out and raise money to put on, because I don't like doing, I didn't know how to do it. And I had a wonderful lady set up the process. She had contacts in the banks and all the other locations. She went out and raised the money. Couple of years later, when it was growing, she developed cancer and died. I turned to my committee and I said, "Who's going to do this now?" They all looked at me. I says, "Well, Dave, you got to do it." I didn't want to, but I did it out of necessity to make it happen. And if there's a way for me to get out of having to raise the money for something that's existed in this community for 98 years, I just love it. I decorate the float, that's all I care to do. I'm not on the Rose Float anymore. I just like decorating the float. So I can look at the budget, I can very easily see, take $100,000 out of something and do it, but, you know, Mr. Starbird's saying, "Don't even touch the $115,000," which is down to about zero now.
Well, with the 50, it would be down to zero. It's not to zero yet, so there's another 50 in there.
The city was putting up the whole cost.
But I increased it another $200,000 by the stroke of a pen.
Yeah, I know, that's, again, you've got $25,000 in the library.
If the, my colleagues agree with that.
For me, there's, Mr. Elliott?
I can interject, just to make sure everybody's on the same page, which I've highlighted on the spreadsheet up there. The total cost allocated for reduction is $131,000. We took off the revenue offset for a net of $81,000 in reduction. So if the revenue offset was not there, we would be reducing $131,000 out of the budget. Sure, please.
It's not 50, 80 on top of the.
No, it's $131. $131 almost, there's a $50,000 contribution.
And again, Mr. Weaver has taken issue with the $31,000 component, and I can't disagree with him or agree with him, but also, as I noted to him earlier today, this reduction, however, we would expect Mr. Duran to go find the $31,000 savings in his budget. So it would be a real savings, whether or not, whether or not it's completely accurate that that amount of cost is allocated to the float. When the staff did the program budgeting, we said, "Take all of your costs and figure out how you would assign them to programs." I can't tell you it's 100% accurate, but they've done their best job of thinking how they would allocate their costs to all the various programs. But if the float is not funded, or if the support for it isn't funded, he's going to have to cut $31,000 out of his budget, which means people, material, supplies, whatever is going to have to be reduced. So whether it was allocated to this program or a little bit of some other program, it's still going to have to be eliminated.
Okay, well, for me, first of all, I don't like to hear colleagues say that unless I vote for a particular program, they're not going to vote for the budget. I don't think that's fair, whether it's coming from Mr. Weaver or any other colleague. You know, there's a lot of compromise in a budget document that's this large, and I think we have to be willing to make that kind of compromise, and, you know, I think that that's the type of pressure that we really shouldn't be putting on each other at this point. I would like to see a budget at the end of the day that by consensus, we can all agree on. Otherwise, I'd like to continue these meetings until we have something. I understand Mr. Weaver's passion, and I think it's admirable to have that passion, but I don't think that we should let that, you know, you don't want to, I don't know what the right metaphor is here, whether it's throw the baby out with the bathwater or if somebody else has a better metaphor. or, you know, if somebody else has a better metaphor, but I don't think that, you know, saying that you're not going to vote for the whole budget because of this, I just don't think that's right. To me, there's a lot of unknowns in this. I don't, still don't know, after listening to Mr. Weaver, what the budget for this is. It doesn't seem that that staff has a real handle on what this really will end up costing. I know what it's costed in the past. Mr. Weaver asserts that there are unnecessary spendings within that budget. I believe him, but I still don't know what that budget really is. We don't know how much money can be raised, if anything. We have some pledges, but we don't have any dollars in hand, and that makes me nervous because we don't really know what we're talking about in terms of the budget. We don't know what we're talking about in terms of contributions. I do know that there's a lot of interest in the community in continuing this. I've also received a few emails from people asking if they can donate money. So I'm not saying that it's not possible that we can't raise some amount, but with a budget this tight, it's not a very comfortable idea for me to go into this not knowing what we're going to be spending and even what the budget of this exercise is. In terms of using redevelopment dollars, last week, the state voted to eliminate redevelopment. And even if we were to continue under their proposed legislation with our redevelopment agency, they're going to be taking at least 12 million dollars from us, which might be close to, if not our entire redevelopment budget. So I am at this point not going to count on that money being available. I just don't think that's prudent. We have to assume that this is coming out of the general fund. We have to be prepared for the worst, that we won't raise any money, even though I think we will, but we have to acknowledge if we budget this and if we sign that contract for the float, that the general fund may be on the hook for the entire amount. I feel like I need to know what that amount is. I'm not even sure what that amount is right now. So there's a lot of unknowns in this for me. There's questions about how the money will be raised. I think if we do go forward with this, having some sort of a city account that people can donate into, and if for some reason it doesn't happen, the money can go back to them, that might make my colleagues feel more comfortable. I understand Mr. Najarian and Mr. Quintero's concern about councilmembers raising money for something like this. You know, it's a tricky kind of thing. I think all of us are involved in various charities. All of us have raised money for charities at certain points. I don't know where you draw that line to doing that or not doing that. The same way, some of us are involved in service clubs, they raise money. I do think that Mr. Weaver is going into this with all the best intentions. I think he wants to see this flow continue, and I appreciate that. If we can do it through raising money, that would be great, but I am very leery to put the general fund on the hook for 100,000. Mr. Manukian thinks that money is there. I don't quite see it. There's a disagreement between him and the city manager. I'd like to get more answers about that. Like I said, I want to be, if anything, conservative and not spend money that we don't have. So I'm seeing a lot of unknowns, not knowing what this costs, not knowing what we can raise, not even knowing how much of that flexibility we have in the general fund. Mr. Weaver.
Man, the only reason I threw that about not voting on the budget, because I heard Mr. Quintero say, and I thought, why is he saying that? He's doing exactly. So I threw it, overreaction. I'll be voting for the budget. There's, just, just, like you said, very passionate on it. We do know the cost on the float, 99,000. The 31,000, I have tried and tried and tried, and I had to get this through a third party.
Someone's asleep at GTV, and there you go. Okay.
I had to get it through a third party. They have, and there's no cost to these. And that's where I spent the two hours since I got out of the airport meeting, going through all these and trying to find out where this cost and where there isn't. That's where I ended up cutting it down. That's the unknown factor. I pray to God I don't have to go out and raise a single penny. I don't want to. I think the city ought to want to do it. I mean, in the old days, 90, late 90s, when I was here on council, Rosefloat would come in and give 2 or 3,000. Nobody batted an eye. It wasn't until Mr. Yusefian made the comment, well, the Rosefloat Association ought to raise half of it. And they had no idea to do. I was on the board then. We had no idea how we're going to raise 50,000. I came up with a bright idea, and it worked. I thought, yes, I've been castigated right and left. The FPPC investigated me, found absolutely nothing illegal. District Attorney, nothing illegal. Every penny was accountable for. People wanted to destroy my character, and they attacked me, and I've had to endure it. But I never made a penny out of it. When I decorate the Rosefloat, I'm the only unpaid crew chief. I'm paid by Phoenix Decorating, and I do it for free, love of the float. So it's been tough years having to take the blunt about being accused of doing things that I know I never did.
One question, when does this contract have to be signed?
In about a month, Jess said. So mid-July, the contract has.
So is it possible to set up this account and see if the money can be raised between now and then? Before we make the commitment, one way or the other?
Andly, I don't think it's very practical. The account can be set up, but I don't know if you're going to raise 50,000 between, in a month.
Well, let me add one thing. When they come in March, April of next year, they bring in the rendering of the float, and they bring the check. Gary Ackerman just did that a month or so ago. The money isn't paid back till about March, April next year. They bring the formal photograph in the gold frame and the check, and the tournament president usually comes.
But they've said that this year, they don't want to make any commitment.
Who?
The Rosefloat.
Association.
No, 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 no. I'm saying the Tournament of Roses would bring the photograph. That's the time usually that somebody brings the check. If the money's going directly to the city, you're going to get it as it comes in. I don't know how fast it's going to come in.
Mr. Quintero?
Yeah, I just want to say, the problem many people have had with Dreaming of Roses is, whether investigation DA, I don't know about any of that. What I do know is that none of us, or anyone that I know of, ever saw the books. No one has ever received an accounting. We're always on Barry Allen about giving us an accounting of Vanguard because it is a nonprofit, and that was true of Dreaming of Roses. So that's why that whole thing blew up.
Well, I did file with the state of California, Dreaming of Roses, Inc., Incorporated, all the paperwork, and it was all acceptable.
Talking about the paperwork, I'm talking about the general ledger of who gave money and what expenses were.
That's all in the file.
Okay, well, meanwhile, this isn't really about Dreaming of Roses because Mr. Weaver said that he doesn't need to, if we were to go forward with this, that he's, that we could set up something through the city so it wouldn't be money going to a councilmember's organization, which I think is important, and those are very valid concerns. Mr. Starbird?
We can do that. I'll point out that in the past, you've entered into these contracts, and generally speaking, you haven't had a guarantee that the Rosefloat Association would be able to raise all of the money. Now, in the last couple of years, you did, because Mr. Weaver's efforts with Dreaming of Roses frankly prefunded them. So they knew they had money in the bank that they were going to be able to meet the next couple of years. But until that point, they were always raising money after you entered into a contract. But you did have an association. You had a group of people who had a history of raising money, resourcing the community that would do that. Now you run a greater risk. That doesn't mean you won't be able to raise the money, and maybe with that commitment, they'll still be able to raise the money. But you have a little more risk because you, you know, the organization sounds like it's having a great deal of difficulty.
The best thing in the world that could happen is a bunch of community leaders, corporate leaders, would come on the board of the Glendale Rosefloat Association and do it. The people on there now, I'm sorry to say, are not the right people to go out and raise 50,000. You just aren't. You need corporate leaders, Nestle's, IHOP, auto dealers. They're the ones that should be on the Rosefloat Board, raising the money, and we should have hands off. That's the ideal thing. Always known that.
Well, be that as it may, we don't have a commitment from those groups, and we don't really have anything set up to go out and ask them for donations. That's, you know, that's the problem. Unless someone happens to be listening right now and wants to give us a call, it'd be great if Nestle or IHOP or any of those groups wanted to jump in, but we've, as we've gone through this budget process, there's been a number of different programs that we've said, well, maybe we can go to the corporate Glendale World and see if they would be interested in in helping out. So, you know, a lot of these companies are financially stressed as well. So it's a very difficult time to be out raising money. Nonprofits are hurting as much as anybody else is hurting. So I'm not really hearing a lot of consensus here, one way or the other. I think that everybody has a desire to see the float continue. It's not that anybody's anti-float up here. There's different levels of enthusiasm. I think there's a lot of valid concerns about the money, given this budget, and that we're down to a place where if we were to approve this, we would technically be in the red. And do we really want to go there? For myself, I think the float is a great thing. The community takes a lot of pride in it. But would I say that I would put that above some of the children's programs that we've canceled or any of the other programs? No. It's not my, I don't see it as as much of a priority, even as some of the things that are on the chopping block. So, and there's a lot of issues, a lot of questions about what it's going to cost, who's going to pay for it. If there's a way we can do it through fundraising, I'm all for it. I just don't know how quickly we can get that up and running and whether we can count on those commitments. So I'm not really sure, you know, what direction I would give staff at this point. I would like to at least give it the ability, give us the ability to see if the community will step forward enough to to raise that money. But I'm very nervous about putting, committing to the general fund to where it's going to put us into the red on this budget.
Well, you have, you could provide the 50,000 and let the month run, and if there's indication between now and then through some means that the balance is going to be raised.
Well, that's sort of what I asked, and I was told that the money is usually, takes about a year to raise, or at least until after.
Well, no, you have that amount of time, because the check isn't due theoretically until March, April next year. But if it's coming into the city all the time, you're going to have a running total.
Well.
You can do what Starbird said. I guarantee you, I'm staying out of it. Not going to have a thing to do with it. The public wants it. We've got some publicity for it for a change. Let's see if it translates in the people actually starting to give.
At this point, I think, I don't think we should next, or cancel the Rosefloat, allocate the 50,000, and see how the community responds and see how it goes.
And then can the money be returned if in a month, we have 5,000, and it's clearly that it's not going to, it's not going to happen? Can that money go back to the people who donated it?
Certainly can.
It can. As you point out, we run the risk. We just need to make sure that we don't sign that contract.
Right.
And put ourselves at risk for the 98, 99,000.
Well, I would, within that time, I would also want to find out what the real budget, sort of the bottom, bare bottoms budget for the float would be, because I'm unclear what that even is at this point.
Well.
I mean, I understand what you're, what the staff believes it is. Mr. Weaver has a different opinion, so maybe.
I have to be honest. I don't know that we're ever going to come to an agreement on that. Like I say, I think the staff's review of the numbers, granted, is as unsophisticated and inaccurate as it may have been, is their best estimate, but it's really more around the activities. If you don't have a group of people there that are able to do it themselves, Mr. Weaver points out, at some point, T-shirts were a fundraiser, and that became too much of an effort for the Rosefloat Association, so Mr. Chapin said, okay, we'll do that. Well, that took some staff who had to manage that. Now, in the upcoming year, would there need to be T-shirts? No. In fact, the staff can very easily say, you know what? All we're doing is we're going to write a check. We're going to sign the contract, we're going to write a check. Everything else has to be done by somebody outside the city, in which case Jess is going to have to find 31,000 savings in his budget, and we're not going to dedicate staff time to the Rosefloat, except to sign the contract and write a check at the end of the year when it's due for the 99,000.
Basically what it's down, like, let me read you just one.
Wait, one question at a time. Mr. Weaver and then Mr. Najarian.
Collaboration with Phoenix Decorating and Pasadena Tournament of Roses Association for the float description, media release, and souvenir parade brochure. I read that to Phoenix Decorating, and the owner says, we do that, but it's listed here as a city cost. You tell me you can't find out the cost better? Either you're saying the owner of Phoenix Decorating is lying, or whatever.
Okay, well, hypothetically, then, let's say the 31,000 is 10,000. There's only 10,000 of staff time dedicated to the float.
It'll be less than that.
Make your decision under that assumption. Let's say the 20,000 is inaccurate, Jess will have to go spread that among some other program that's being reduced.
Okay, let me go to Mr. Najarian.
I don't think it makes a big difference ultimately in your decision whether it's 131,000 or 110,000.
Mr. Najarian.
But what we received today was a, was a letter from the Rose, Glendale Rosefloat Association that they would not be willing to pick up the staff work that would otherwise be necessary to put the float forward. So let's not say there's someone else out there, because there is no one else out there, unless it's Mr. Weaver.
Mr. Weaver's taking issue with whether it takes 31,000 of staff support. My point is, okay, let's not get hung up on that issue. Assume it's, assume it's nominal, assume it's 10,000, because I think the real salient issue is whether or not you're willing to commit the city for 100,000 contractual cost to allow the Rosefloat to move forward, and whether or not you're expecting to get any money raised in the course of the year to reduce that. And if you think it can work, then then we commit ourselves.
I think as a governing body, we need to have more than just a notion as to whether it would work. We need to have a group that's out there ready to say, we're ready to pick up the ball. Thanks for the 100 grand, but we're going to make sure this goes from A to Z and have it done properly. Not, I mean, we're not just check writing, and we can't wash our hands of the whole thing. I have an obligation to the public as well for that 50,000. They're going to say, why did we cut the library? Why did we not fill the potholes? Why didn't we do this or that? So I'm not comfortable with a general leap of faith that there's going to be someone that's going to stand in there, regardless of what that staffing cost is, to carry this thing across.
I think your finance director quit.
You've all, you've all made good points. No question about it. There's no guarantee, but the old days, 2 or 3,000, and we thank, Rosefloat Association's the only organization that gives money back to the city, by the way. Whether it's 1,000 or 50,000, I don't know any organization we'd give money to that we get money back.
Commissary status of woman, if I might add.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right. They do some now.
But you have a month, have a month to see if something would come together.
I'm willing to do this month plan, but I don't want to, I might want to make it very clear, I don't want to commit the city to anything. I want to see where we are in a month and then bring this discussion back. I'm willing to do that, but not to put us on the line for any money coming out of the general fund at this point.
Your budget would need to contain the, would really need to contain 100,000 appropriation, and I'm hearing a 50,000 anticipated revenue, but with direction that a contract would not be signed until there is a plan to give you a high level of assurance that the 50,000 match would be there.
Yep, that's, I think, where I'm at.
At least 50,000. I would love to see even more come from the community. 50,000 at this point is a lot of money.
You all need to decide at what level you're willing to spend the city's money, and that would be the number. But but my suggestion is, we need to adopt a budget before the end of June. We don't have to sign a contract until mid-July, apparently.
Yes, Mayor Friedman, members of council, I may be able to negotiate a longer period before we have to commit.
Okay.
Whatever. You'd have a period of time, which to find out, and frankly, we wouldn't sign the contract until there's a plan that comes back to you.
Jess, I think that would be very helpful. I know that they've lost a lot of cities. There are very few cities that are left in this parade because of the exact same problem.
But I spoke to them.
So I just want people to understand, this is not just Glendale. We're one of the last that are staying in this float. So I would think it really behooves the Rose Float themselves, the Rose Parade themselves, to give us some time.
And when I spoke to him, he seemed very understandable of our situation. So maybe he'd be willing to let us take more time to commit.
I'd like to have an understanding as to the cost, the sharing of any cost savings. If Phoenix Decorating comes back and says, "You know what? Forget the $100,000. I've got a deal for you. It's only $80,000." How are we going to do that? Are we going to say 50 city, 30 public? Or are we going to split it evenly and share the costs evenly? I think, I think an equitable way would be to share those costs, share the burden, and share the relief of, of any cost savings equitably between the public and the private.
Well, from my mind, as I said before, this is, I think this is a nice program, but to me, it's a luxury. I think there's a lot of other things that I would rather see the money go towards, programs for disadvantaged residents, programs for children, libraries, there's a lot of things. I mean, the float is great, don't, don't get me wrong, but a float that appears for a couple of seconds on television gives us some publicity, but it doesn't do what buying books for our children's library does. It doesn't give you that long-term, real, meaningful kind of help for our residents who are suffering right now. To me, it's a luxury, and I'm not, I really would like to see where we are after this month, or however much time we need to take, and however much time we'll get from the Rose Parade. I'm not going to commit right now, even to $50,000. I just don't think that's right in this budget, given where that money could go, and given that we're cutting programs, you know? We're cutting actual programs that benefit residents. I think the Rose Float's great, but to me, it's a luxury, all things considered.
I'd like to have an address, where to mail a check, because council comments every Tuesday. I think I have the right to ask people to send donations into a certain address. I'd like that for tomorrow night.
Okay, so...
Can get donations out, they don't have an address.
When can staff get that, whatever that is, that account? Mr. Elliott, how, how would that work? Is this something that's going to take months to set up?
Well, the account is there already. It's, it's called Special Events Rose Float.
This is easy.
So people can donate?
It's easy. By tomorrow, we'll have an address that people could send their, their checks to.
And is it tax deductible? Is it considered a charitable contribution?
It is.
It is?
We have a tax ID number. We're a non-taxing, non-taxing entity, or a non-tax entity.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I started thinking about that, and I had staff dig up, and I can forward it to you. We have a, a letter from the IRS that allows donations to cities or governments under a Section 115-1 to be tax deductible. That may not have the same deductibility as a 501(c)(3), but they can...
It may not be charitable, but it is tax deductible.
It is tax deductible.
But, at least me and my thing out of it.
And I can forward that to you.
Okay, so I think we have a compromised position that staff understands. Okay? So...
So the budget that'll be brought to you will be much the same that you've seen in years past, where there'll be $100,000 appropriation and anticipated $50,000 revenue. But we will not be signing a contract unless and until there is a plan and a program to show a high level of, of possibility we'll raise the $50,000 necessary or more.
So Mr. Elliott, where are we now with our budget, since we've just put $50,000 back in?
That $50,000 would put you at about zero, a little...
Well, yeah, about $2,000 under.
Yeah, we're not going to, we're not going to quibble over $2,000. I don't think my calculator goes out to that many digits.
I can round that.
But we're not in the red, at least.
No, but you have a, you have a balance, I would still say you have a balanced budget.
Okay.
I'll vote for it.
Okay.
In my opinion, we have an overage. We have a surplus of approximately $1 million.
That would be very nice.
I want to say, you may. I was just pulling the figure, for example, property taxes. Anticipated property taxes, of course, will be in the neighborhood of $42 million. Now, I'm sure Mr. Elliott will not bet very much money that he'd be within $100,000 one way or the other on that number. Would you, Mr. Elliott? No. Because, because that would be something like two tenths of 1% possibly. And believe me, we operate in a margin of error that's greater than that. So will any of these numbers possibly be higher or lower than $100,000? No question about it. None of us would bet any money on any of our major revenues being above or below $100,000. We've tried to hit them as accurately as we can, but I'll tell you, this is not an exact science by any stretch of the imagination.
Okay. So we're moving on, I think, to fire.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the city council and city staff, Harold Skoggins, Fire Chief. I'm not sure of what the...
This is my, this is my issue. I brought this up, the BLS program.
Yes.
I would like to know how many people we're going to send to paramedics, how much of an increase in their funds they will get, how many people you're going to train for the new ambulance drivers, how many are you going to need, and whether they're going to be subject to benefits? Because the last time we were told they were not subject to benefits, so I think it's important to have all this out in the public so everyone is clear as to where we're going.
Absolutely. Councilman Menucha, if we can go through those one by one, so I can capture them. So the first one was, what was the first question?
How many people, well, how many people would you be hiring? 60 people?
That is correct.
And we said, initially, we said they're part-time, and they're going to be working less than 1,000 hours. But it's apparent that there's some will be working more than 1,000 hours, and they'll be subject to benefits. I'd like to know the cost, and which benefits they will be subject to, and all of that.
First, let me start by saying the PERS costs were calculated in the, in the proposals that were presented to you.
So they will be subject to PERS?
After 1,000 hours of employment, they will be subject to PERS. So with the savings that I presented to you, the costs were calculated in that cost. The number we will be hiring, our projected number, is approximately 60, and I can explain that number. Currently, we have a staff of 20 to replace one BLS, one ALS card that went out of service in 2010. And the way we do that is we work the ambulance operators on 12-hour shifts. So the firefighters currently work on 24-hour shifts. So we have to hire twice as many. And in order to not have the overtime behind the ambulance operators and to keep them as hourly employees, we have a backfill number behind them. With the new group coming onboard, or that we would like to bring onboard, we would need 12 behind the initial 48. We're replacing four RAs, rescue ambulances, with that 24 firefighter paramedics in total. But with engine 29 going back up to four person, it's a total of a 21 sworn firefighter reduction. So it's 24. So to replace them on a 12-hour schedule, just split to 24 hours, we would need 48. And we need a group behind them that we call in to work when they take off for school, when they're taking tests, when they get sick, when they do all those different things. It's my fault if I didn't give a clear understanding that after that first 1,000 hours, that they would be collecting, not collecting, but they, we, the city would be paying into PERS. They would be paying in at the same rate as all of the other city employees. We operate under the same standards and practices that City of Glendale operates on all of their hourly employees. We would not deviate from that. So it would be a total of 60 is what we would need to hire.
And they won't be receiving benefits like health insurance, correct?
No. They will not be receiving benefits like health insurance. So when I made that statement, that's more along the lines of what I meant. If we wanted to put a program in play where they could, because Councilman Freeman asked about healthcare reform and stuff like that, we, we have a plan where we can actually do that, and it would be a competitive rate with other ambulance operator positions at a lower dollar amount per hour, and it is costed for health benefits and PERS and everything that goes along with that. So the number is 60.
Mr. Najarian?
Okay, so they're not going to be sworn?
No.
They're not going to be getting medical benefits?
No.
Have we compared this to hiring a private company, Schaefer, to cover that? And what are, what is that comparison?
What we did was...
Not just Schaefer, but a private company.
Right. What we did was we contacted the cities who were used in our survey, the cities of Santa Monica and the cities of Anaheim. And the reason why we contacted both of those agencies is because currently, they use private ambulance operators. I believe one uses Gerber and the other uses Care Ambulance. What they, the cities of Santa Monica and Anaheim, they don't pay Gerber or Care for the ambulance transport piece. But the cities of Santa Monica and Anaheim don't collect the revenues because they aren't doing the transfer, the transport. So what those cities actually receive is what's called a pass-through. And that's usually the difference in the rate between a BLS call, basic life support call, and an ALS call. So what we did calculate, and there's some other fees that go along with that also, there's an administrative fee that those private ambulance companies may have to the city for processing paperwork and different things like that. And, and one of the companies had a provision in the contract that said, if there's an inter-facility transport, which is a hospital-to-hospital, or hospital and nursing care facility, things like that, in a five-mile radius of the city, they could use one of those BLS units to go do that. You know, that's, up to that city that could compromise the service. But what we did calculate was the amount of revenue that we bring in today versus the amount of revenue that we would bring in if we went to a private ambulance type of a transport model. And that amount is approximately just over $500,000 a year versus the $4.3 million a year that we currently bring in to support the program today. The reason why that number becomes very important is because many of our costs still remain the same. We have to buy our narcotics, our drugs, our equipment, all those other different things that we would still need today, tomorrow, if we had a private transport model. So the difference in the number is, those cities don't pay particular, a number for that transport, but the amount of money comes off of what the city would receive back from the pass-through. That's what it's termed as.
And Chief, our, our recovery rates, I guess, projection are the best, most updated and the most current and the most accurate that you think we would have. Because this is where we got in trouble with Chief Hins...
Right.
...so many years ago. He says, "Oh, we're going to be..." You know, he didn't take into account the non-payments, the Medi-Cal, the uninsured, all those other things. So I want to make sure that we don't go that route. My support of this is based on your representation, that is going to end up costing us less money having this program, this BLS system, then going out to the private. And that's based on our, some cost recovery that's going to make up any difference in the contract price.
That is correct. And just, just to give you an understanding, when Chief Hins, back in 19, wow, 90...
99.
99 presented this, there were some different, there was a different set of circumstances I think we all can understand. Our people and the company who did the survey used the best information possible. They used the ER data from our three local hospitals, they used the data on what our payer mix was and the payer rate was, and our private insurance payer rate was very high, and so was it for the hospitals, and the same thing for Medicare. Over the last 10 years, 11 years, that's changed drastically. So based on the numbers and all the information that we have today, this program should help the city come pretty close to breaking even. And just so you also know and understand, it would be pretty difficult for the rates to go much lower than they are today. For example, our Medi-Cal reimbursement, we basically receive 10 cents on the dollar right now for our Medi-Cal transports, for calls. Be pretty difficult for that to go much lower. Medicare rates, currently, we receive 24 to 30 cents on the dollar from our Medicare reimbursements. Be pretty difficult for that to go much lower. And our non-insured rate is, it's a pretty high number, but, but that is what it is. But with some of the changes that are possibly coming in healthcare reform, we may be receiving some relief in the transport rates. And it's, that's why we think that we're going to be okay also, even though those numbers aren't calculated. But for example, there's a bill right now moving through the California State Assembly, Assembly Bill 687. And that addresses the Medicare transport rates to try to provide relief. So there are some things out there in the future that could possibly help us out. And Councilman Menucha, and I'm not sure if I addressed the balance of your questions.
Yes, you addressed the questions that I was, I was referring to. And how many of your firefighters are going to go to school to be paramedics? And how much of an increase in their rates will they get?
We would need a total of 54 firefighter paramedics to have two firefighters on each of our nine engines for all three shifts. So 18 a day. Currently, we do not have that number. We would, we would need to send...
Who would help currently?
I believe it's in the low 40s or high 30s. So we would need to send approximately, and it's, and that's going to be a moving number over the next 18 months with our implementation plan, because as firefighter paramedics promote to fire engineer and to fire captain, that would lower that number. So we're working with kind of a moving target. But what we're estimating is we would need to send between 16 to 20 firefighters to paramedic school. And the way we plan on doing that is, at the start of the year, January 1st, 2012, to send our first group to school. That date becomes very important, because as we move forward with implementing this program, January 1st, 2012, we will have an over hire. So instead of hiring firefighters behind that group gone to school to cover their overtime spot, we won't have that expense. It costs approximately $2,000 to send a firefighter to paramedic school. So that's how we plan on covering that over the next 18 months during the implementation. Now, the new firefighters coming into the program, they would receive, after graduating paramedic school, passing all the tests needed to pass, when they first start in the program, they would receive an 8% bonus, 8% specialty pay, not unlike today. That's the same program that we have today.
I thought you said 16%.
After one year, it goes up to 15% for the new people.
Okay.
Not 16 as it is today. But I think your question was addressing the new people that we would bring into the program?
No, I, I just, overall, I mean, if, if a firefighter goes to school, which we're paying for, they get a, they get a 16% bump up in their pay when they graduate?
Not immediately when they graduate. They get 8%, and then it, it goes up to 16% specialty pay.
After a year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And...
But with the new program, it would max out at 15% instead of 16%.
And we're, we're still paying them while they're going to school?
Yes.
And how, how long is the school?
The school is approximately six to seven months. It's pretty intense.
And it's not going to generate overtime?
No, not, not with the plan that we have to move forward. In the past, when we haven't had an over hire, if we send three firefighter paramedics to school, we cover those three spots behind them. But with the over hire that we're expecting to have, because it's going to take us approximately 18 months to attrition out 21 sworn firefighter positions to fully implement this program.
That's the information I wanted to be out in public. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Chief. Okay, next, Mr. Zern.
Madam Mayor, members of the council...
Last, last but not least.
We made it. We made it. We have had time to practice a number of different scenarios, so we've got it from a half-hour presentation to a two-hour presentation. So it looks like we're about a 45 minutes.
45 minutes.
So we will, when Ms. Engel, our transit manager, comes up, she'll cut to the chase and get, get where we need to have the decisions made. Just a bit of a recap. Last year, during the budget process, I brought up the fact that our transit fund was in a situation where we needed to make some tough decisions. On the one hand, it was a positive thing. We had built a very successful, we built a very successful transit system, providing the maximum amount of bus service that we could, both a fixed route and a dial-a-ride, with the resources that we had, which are primarily Prop A, Prop C. And now, we have Measure R monies that we can also use a portion of. Those are all sales tax-based monies, and as we know, the economy has impacted that greatly. So our revenues have dropped, our costs continue to rise. So what we, we did was develop a plan with a series of options for you that include revenue enhancements and cost reductions. And when we came to, first presented this to the Transportation and Parking Commission, we received their recommendations, and then first came to you in a two-hour study session late last year. So we're going to pick up now with where we project finances, and then get into where the options are for you to decide. We've laid them out in a line item format, so you'll be able to look, and, and we hope that makes it easier to pick and choose. You're looking at, I've called them, cost reductions and revenue enhancements, but that basically boils down to raising the fare and reducing the service. And last year during the budget, what we had indicated to the council was, we wanted to do two things. We wanted to do a comprehensive financial analysis with our staff and Mr. Elliott's staff in finance, and also what we did is a line-by-line study. This is just a, a very thorough evaluation of the service we provide to see where we were, we were serving, a great many or the greatest need was, where we were underserving, and where maybe we had some ability to reduce service or move it to, to, to another line. And this is really, as I said before, somewhat of a victim of our success. We've, we've developed a very, very successful bus system. It's just that our revenues are very limited. And, and we have plowed all of our money into the transit system. Unlike some communities, we, we haven't used this money to build roads. We've done some infrastructure, which has been primarily transit-based infrastructure. So all of our dollars has essentially gone into our fixed route system and our dial-a-ride system. But it's just come to, to that point where we have to make some tough decisions. You have a finite source of revenue, and we need to, to decide where we want to best spend those, those dollars. those dollars. We've even maxed our money for the operational needs and not really put money aside for the capital needs. Our buses that we've been replacing have, we've relied almost exclusively on grants, whether they're federal grants, or most of our money comes through discretionary grants awarded by Metro. So even there, we've, in some sense, cut a corner in order to push as much money as we could into the operation of the transit system. So without any further discussion on my part, Ms. Engel, who last September went through the line-by-line study with you, is now going to pick it up from the financial projection and then get right in, because of time, get right into the options that you have to consider for us to put the fund in a good place for the future. So thank you. Forty-five minutes.
Okay, we are, we will move forward very quickly with what I call the Cliff Notes version of this presentation. So if Bob's going to help me, I'm going to slide seven. What we wanted to really point out and make sure was really, you were really aware of today, is we have about a $3.4 million annual gap between our current revenues and our current expenses, should we keep a status quo over the next five years. So we looked at, we did a forecast with our anticipated revenues and with our anticipated expenses based on a-
One moment.
Mr. Howard, do we have, if we ride the B-line, do we have a conflict here?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm assuming you're paying the fare if there is one?
Yes, sir.
Every time.
We need every quarter we can get, so thank you. Let's continue, we'll get through this as quickly as we can. So our proposal to you today is to put together an annual savings that we projected that we could gain over the next five years to reduce that $17.2 million gap in what our projected, and our projected revenues are and what our current expenses are estimated at. So our goal today is to close that for the $3.4 million for fiscal year 12. So let's go to slide eight. What we're recommending is a number of enhanced revenues in coordination with a number of service and program cuts. And so we'll just go through all of the enhancements. You'll see everything is numbered. These are revenue enhancements, number one through five. And we have a, we've switched these around a little bit, so we have a revenue enhancement eight. We'll go through these really quickly. At the very bottom, there are some options. So you'll see revenue option number one, two, three, and four. Should you want to pull anything off of the top of the list, those options to the bottom of the list, you can use to swap out. Our goal at the end of the conversation, when we get to the budget slides, is to get back to that $3.4 million so we can move ahead. So our enhanced revenues, we're suggesting a B-line fare increase to 75 cents. This is what we call the general cash fare. We're also recommending that in about 18 months, we increase that fare to a dollar. So you can make a decision now that will incorporate a passenger fare increase, kind of graduated over the next two years. So the $484,000, it would be additional revenue for fiscal year 12 if we go to the 75 cents. And then in January of 2013, we could look to again another $172,000 by going to the dollar fare. Our revenue option two is to increase the B-line fares for our two express routes, which are our commuter routes between GTC, the Burbank Transit Center, and downtown Glendale to $2. Now, I have to do a little caveat on this, because we get reimbursed from MetroLink or from MTA half fare of what we charge for those MetroLink or commuter riders that are going from the trains to our services. So that means we're really going to net a dollar per person fare. Right now, we net 50 cents per person on the fare. So increasing our fare to $2, the passengers who are using MetroLink currently with an EZ Pass would not see an increase in their fare, but we would get a higher reimbursement from MetroLink and from Metro for folks that are using the EZ Pass program.
And how many of those commuters that are using that route are using the EZ Pass?
Almost everyone that's buying a monthly MetroLink pass or the 10-ride ticket has an EZ Pass logo on it.
I understand, that wasn't the question. The question was how many people that are using the bus have, I'm trying to figure out how many people are going to have to be paying the extra fare.
I'd say probably one or two people per day.
Okay.
There's only a few people that get onboard the route that are not MetroLink transfers.
I guess I'm one of them when I take MetroLink.
So if you've ridden the train, you won't see any cost difference. If you're boarding someplace mid-ride, using that route to get you wherever you're going, because that's the fastest bus is getting there, then you would pay the $2 cash fare.
Okay. Thank you.
Revenue option number three is to increase the dial-a-ride fare to $1.25. It's currently a dollar. Revenue number four, we are redesigning the graphics on the buses, and with that, we hope to be able to advertise more on the buses or place more ads on the buses, and that would generate an additional $20,000 in revenue annually.
We're not considering those television advertisements, are we?
Not currently, not in this plan. This is just exterior king bus ads and tail ads as we currently have. Right now, only part of our fleet accommodates the external ads. So we would expand that to the total fleet. And then revenue option number five, we've talked about mostly in conjunction with mobility plan, that we would use some money from the parking revenues in downtown or eventually a mobility fund if that is established. Right now, it's generating about $300,000 a year in parking funds, and we're suggesting maybe half of that for next fiscal year could be allocated to supporting the routes. In this case, probably B-line one and two would offset some of the costs that serve the downtown area. So our enhanced revenues as far as cash would be $858,000. Our revenue option that's listed as number eight is really a strategy that long-term may help us to control our costs for dial-a-ride. Right now, our average age of riders is 75 years. So if we can increase the minimum age, so new people coming into the program would wait until they're 65 to participate as a senior, then maybe we can manage the demand and not have to expand additional vehicles or additional staff to provide those services and kind of manage that contract. A lot of the agencies, since, you know, now being 50 is the new 30, being 65, we find people are still actively engaged, so still driving, they're still much more mobile, they can use the fixed route system in most cases. And so upping that age over time will help us to manage the demand. So it's a non-cost item or a non-revenue generating item, but it's a strategy we can use long-term. Any questions on enhanced revenues that we're proposing?
Catherine, it might be useful. Do you have some statistics, whether now or later time, that give some of the demographics about our riders to get a sense of the implications of a 25, of an increase from 25 cents per ride, and assuming they're going and coming, so there's 50 cents to a buck and a half a day? I'm wondering if we could get some statistics on the number of students and if you have them low income.
The students in low income, they're not subject to these fares.
The fares that we're talking about are across the board for our whole system, as we've recommended them. We don't have individual demographics by ridership. We do have some information that was in our line-by-line that talked about, most of the people that ride our service are going to work in school, a very large percentage are going to Glendale College. Most of them are riding four or more times per week, so they're really steady riders. But when we had done our line-by-line analysis, we did a really extensive outreach program to our existing riders, to the community in general, and most of the feedback came back saying, "Don't cut the service. We'll pay more in fares, whether it's for dial-a-ride or for the fixed route system. Just give us access to the services."
Now, low income, do they pay these fares? Don't they have a subsidized fare system?
No, it's the same, it would be the same for everyone that, our fares are considerably lower than most other regional fares or other carriers. If you are disabled or you are a senior, we have a half, or you're on Medicare, or have a-
So if you're on Medicare, which I would think-
Right. If you have a Medi-Cal card, you are able to access the half fare program that is available countywide. All of the transit operators that are federally funded are required to do that. So in this case, if there was a senior that is now 65, that would be part of the dial-a-ride program potentially, excuse me, potentially, but they become disabled at 60, they would qualify for the program based on their disability versus their age. So there's kind of a, there's a safety net for those folks if they were disabled in that process. But the fare is the same regardless of income, because there's no real way to ask that as you're boarding the bus, what your income is. The fares typically, cash fares, are across the board, are the same for everyone, other than senior disabled and Medicare cardholders.
We have monthly fares too, right? We have monthly pay.
Right, we are proposing, and maybe we can do that, but let's go to the next slide, Bob. What we are proposing, when we do our cash fares, that's the most common term we use, because that's usually what most people in our systems use. 65% of our riders pay cash. But we have priced out some other options. So if you're a real frequent rider, we want to reward you for riding all the time with us and making us, or making the B-line the product of choice, I guess. And so we're looking at, on a 31-day pass, which is a rolling pass, so you could start it at the 15th of the month and use it till the next 15th of the month, it's very flexible. You would have a 25% savings over riding with paying cash, should you be a frequent rider and using the bus, you know, four or five times a week. So there is a built-in savings for the most frequent users. On the 10-ride card, it would be for folks that don't travel all the time or want a little bit more flexibility in using the system, so their reward is a little bit less, they get a 10% reduction. But there is some cost savings, so someone can really calculate, "Am I going to use Metro today because it's taking me where I need to go? Am I going to use B-line because that's convenient?" And they can fluctuate between the two systems, depending on how they package their pass purchases or their cash-paying purchases together. So what we would be recommending and adopting would be the categories on the right-hand side, which was our option B we took to the Transportation and Parking Commission, and what they're proposing is to do the 75 cent base fare. So it would leave the senior and disabled in Medicare at half fare, with seniors being 60 years old. So we're trying to keep them active and keep them on the fixed route system, which is considerably less expensive than the dial-a-ride system. We would offer a pass program and a 10-ride card program at a savings. We would have a transfer between B-line buses that they could pay, so that they're not paying a full cash fare each time they were to board a separate bus. So that would be the 25 cent transfer. If they were transferring between B-line to Metro, and it happens on the same side of Metro, if they travel Metro and transfer to us, it would be a 50 cent inter-agency transfer. We're still keeping the children that are less than five years of age, would ride free two children with one paid adult or one full fare. And then we still would keep all of our regional fare media intact. So for some riders that ride multiple systems, it may pay off to buy an EZ Pass, that you can ride all 23 operators that are on that system throughout all of LA County. So for passengers that have those passes and they ride the B-line, they would not see a fare increase, anything different, because they're buying that countywide pass to begin with. So there's no out-of-pocket cost to them. And then we talked about the dial-a-ride fare media going up to $1.25. We do not do passes for dial-a-ride. It's a cash-pay-as-you-go program, and that seems to work fine with our population. So if there's any other questions on revenues? Yeah, well, actually, that would be great, because then we can move through the rest of the slides and we'll be done very quickly. What we could do is, if there's any particular point, do you want to come back and readdress being-
Well, I just have a problem with eliminating senior meals, we're eliminating, you know, the very easy transportation during very, very difficult times.
We're not eliminating senior meals.
Well, I thought we were.
No, they're using their reserves.
They've built up a sizable reserve that will fund it for several years.
Well, some senior programs we're eliminating in the Parks Program, Parks Department. Here we are with the B-line, this is probably their sole means of transportation. And I get complaints that our water and power bills are high, and they barely have enough to get something to eat, and here we're talking about proposed fare increases. I just am very uncomfortable, and I, at this point, I can't, I can't support, because I know how difficult it is getting on the MTA.
So it's 35 cents for seniors, you recognize that? That's what we propose.
Yes, yes, I do, I do. And the monthly passes, $13.50, and, you know, these people are living on $13.50, I'm sorry.
Mayor Friedman, Councilmember Manukian, there is a bright spot in our process that we do. Currently, we transport, on our dial-a-ride program, we transport seniors to the nutrition sites for no cost. It's something that our transportation budget absorbs the cost of those folks, so we do provide that, what I call the critical link for life services. So if they are participating in the meal programs, either at the ARC or at Spar Heights, Monday through Saturday, they are provided free transportation, or they don't, they don't pay a fare to take advantage of that program.
So you said before you had done a survey, so I'm curious as to what the results were. How many people did you respond to that they absolutely couldn't pay any fare increase, they would have to stop riding?
I could get you those numbers. We did have, like I said, a very robust process. We had provided the council with that information back in September that listed out all the comments.
Generally, I mean, I'm not asking you for the specific numbers.
It was probably a handful of folks. For the most part, I'd say the, a very large majority of seniors that responded, particularly for dial-a-ride, said, "We'll pay whatever you want," or, you know, and they're talking, at that point, we talked about, "Would you pay a dollar? Would you pay $2?"
It's not the dial-a-ride, it's the B-line. It's not the dial-a-ride.
And B-line is still much less expensive than their option of riding Metro.
And dial-a-ride.
And dial-a-ride. So even with our fare increase, we're still-
But dial-a-ride, you have to schedule for, right? You have to schedule. Where at B-line, you can just walk up to the street and get on.
Right, that's why we're encouraging seniors to stay as active as they can with the fixed route system.
Mr. Najarian?
I don't think we should be really too fearful of increasing it from 15 to 35 cents for the seniors. It's clearly a lot less percentage-wise than the regular cash fare is. It's critical to understand that this is a system that unless we are able to come close, we're bleeding red ink anyway. This is something that's highly subsidized by the city. Unless we come close to plugging that gap to a point where it doesn't kill the system, we've got to maintain and create the options for the seniors to ride. I don't think seniors are going to be happy if we keep it at 15 cents and we end up cutting our headway between our buses dramatically. And I think what they want, and what I've seen at the MTA, and I've had, I've heard from thousands of people, is that they want to keep the service, they're willing to pay a little bit more. These rates at the B-line that have gone unchanged for how many years? 70 years?
Long time.
Over 15 years. I mean, this is the best transportation deal in the entire county, perhaps the entire state. I don't think we have an obligation to continue to drive it into the ground just for the sake of maintaining the low rates. Everyone has to pay. Gas costs are going up, operation costs are going up. We've got to keep this system viable. The only way to keep it viable is through modest increases. These are modest increases. These rates should have gone up years and years ago, but we held it down as low as possible. I don't think it's fair that we say that now the seniors can't afford it because they can't pay their electricity, that we bump that up. Because what's going to happen, the alternative is going to be driven into the ground. And at the MTA, I'm fighting for every single penny we can get. You guys are here, we had that big check, we got the Measure R funds, we joined with Pasadena, Burbank, and ourselves, so a tri-city transportation cooperative. I mean, we are squeezing every possible subsidy we can out of the county. The only way that we can have good faith in all this is to ask our riders for their, it's not even their fare share, but a portion of the fare share to make this a viable system. I ride the B-line too. My children ride the B-line almost on a daily basis. I'm very familiar with it, and I think we owe it to the system and to the residents as a whole to share some of the increased costs that we have on the senior riders, as well as the regular cash fare riders.
Mayor Friedman and Councilmember Najarian, one of the things I think is important to look at, our cash, our percentage of fares of part of our overall operation is 6.4%. The standard for all transit agencies in California is a 20% fare box recovery. We are well below any norm for what our fares are compared to-
And explain what that means. What is the fare box recovery? That is, for every dollar we spend on the transportation, we get how much back?
Well, 20 cents of that is supposed to come from the riders using the system. So when the Fed and the states say, "We're going to use money to fund our systems," and in this case, we have our Tier Two funding now that makes the 20% a requirement, there is an expectation that there's going to be this local contribution to the cost of the services, to help pay for the cost of the services, and that 20% of the cost to operate your transit service should be borne by the participants who benefit from that service. So where some agencies don't make that 20% because they're in between fare increases, they pay for that out of their local funds, whether it's a general fund or an increment out of, like, our local return funds that we get now. So there is, there is an expectation that fares would bring in approximately 20% of the revenue needed to fund the system. And right now, we are at 6.4%.
I think we should go to the revenues and expenditures to see where we are, the overall numbers, because we have $14 million annually, and we're increasing these fares, the proposed revenue enhancement approximately $1 million. Why aren't we doing it through efficiencies of, generating efficiencies through the expenditures, which is the next slide?
We have those two.
We have an MNO of $9.5 million. I don't know what that entails, and I can go on the budget and look at it.
I think we're getting there, right? No, we continue in the presentation.
Can I, can I offer you a second to put in perspective? I stepped out during Steve's comments, and I'm told he didn't mention the overall condition of the fund, the transit fund. I think that's critically important as you think about this. Catherine, this operation is, this year will run about a $3.5 million deficit.
That's correct.
Your, your reserve, your fund balance in the, in the local transit assistance fund, we don't have any other funds that we use for transportation, do we? Is eight, is, is a hair under $9 million.
Is this, I'm sorry, is this under the Public Works Department?
Yes, under Public Works.
Thank you.
So if, so if we've used $3.5 million of that this fiscal year, that means you're going to be at roughly $5.5 million. You can afford another 18 months at this level of deficit, and you won't have any money left. Then, then you'll have to cut back operations considerably, and you won't get by with just increasing fares. So we have to head this problem off before it gets there. So raising revenues doesn't solve the whole problem, but it get, but it allows you to stretch out your recovery period so you can get in a better condition years out. That's, that has been my concern with this fund for a long time. And now with the reduction in the Prop-ANC funds because of the downturn in the economy, it's made even, even more significant than it had been before. Before, we'd been running along $1 million and $1.5 million a year or so in deficit, but we had a very large reserve, and we anticipated getting to this point and eventually raising fares. But with the downturn, that's been made even more drastic. So you have about 18 months left. That would mean this next fiscal year and halfway into the next fiscal year, you'll be out of money. And you'll be living on an operation that is going to be about $3.5 million shy of being able to meet its budget every year. I know total revenues in this fund are in the neighborhood of, help me here, Catherine, yeah, $9.1 million total revenues, just looking at the caper. So about, about $9 million total annual revenues in the fund, including your, your fare box return. Now, that could improve. It could be the two lines that Catherine showed you earlier. Well, maybe the revenue side will come up more quickly as the economy recovers, but I'm very concerned with sales tax revenues on gasoline, which is Prop-A...
No, we're all sales tax.
We're all sales tax?
General sales tax.
Okay. So its return is, is as good as you can anticipate the economy returning, and that may be a relatively slow climb out of the hole that we're currently in.
Okay, let's continue with the presentation.
So if we're looking at fund balancing, fund balance recommendations, we took the same approach as other departments and put together discretionary priority and essential services for your review. So in this slide, we have four options or five options that we're looking at. Options one through four are ongoing cost savings that we'll see year to year. Option number five is just a one-time savings because we're kind of consolidating some CIP projects and narrowing it that down for a, either one-time savings or a one-time not spending out of our fund as it's projected. So on item one, we're looking at, oops, I'm sorry, go back. Slide 10. For item one, on canceling the metro fare subsidy program, this is a program that buys down the cost of metro passes for seniors here in town. It's a program that was implemented in the early 90s before we actually had a B-line system. And so when cities received all of their Prop-A revenues, they had to at some point decide how they were going to spend those dollars or lose those dollars or have to return them. So the, the city at that point made a program commitment to do a metro fare subsidy. We're thinking the time for that subsidy has kind of come and gone. There's, it, it doesn't make sense for us to be raising B-line fares and also subsidizing metro fares, which are already subsidized for seniors in this program. So the net savings for that program would be at $200,000. Our second reduction would be attaining some of those efficiencies on our Route 3, and that would be the next slide, Bob. In the line-by-line analysis, I pulled out a couple of things to kind of refresh our memories. Our Route 3 goes from downtown Glendale out to JPL. And when you look at the ridership, almost a little over half of our ridership happens between downtown and the college. That is the bulk of the day-to-day trip purposes or trips that are being made are between, in the downtown segment. Only 10% of our riders are actually riding between Glendale College and Montrose. Again, it's all single-family, there's a lot of open space, so there's not a lot of demand. When you look at, at our maps, the, the area on the bottom shows the demand for transit orientation, and you'll, you'll see that's where the trips are generated and then to the college as the destination. There's little demand between the college, and you'll see there's no darker shaded areas. There's little demand between the college and Montrose. And then our service in, from Montrose to JPL consists of mostly high school students along Foothill Boulevard. We have five high schools. And at the time that we did the line-by-line study, the service that we sell to La Cañada was running all-day service on the La Cañada shuttle and then a morning tripper service that was highly underutilized. They only had about four passengers per hour, and it was intended to be the express service between the west side of La Cañada to JPL for those employees at JPL. Well, there wasn't a lot of demand for that. So in the time that we've been bringing this to council, we worked with the City of La Cañada to restructure their service. So their service now follows that dotted line that comes from JPL down to, actually down Ocean View to Montrose. So they've extended their route, actually, in, to make that Montrose connection. And then that morning service that we've now put on the afternoon for the school time, the three o'clock service time, to accommodate all of the extra overload or overcrowding we were having on both Route 3 and the La Cañada shuttle. So those 39% of passengers that were traveling in that Montrose to JPL have largely been accommodated by a restructuring of La Cañada service. So what we're recommending is we keep our core service for most of our riders between downtown and the college, and then every other trip on the B-line 3 would go to JPL. So we still have that continuity of service to get everyone up through to JPL, but the majority of the passengers that are traveling up on Foothill Boulevard are now accommodated by the La Cañada service, and then we get to save some of that money to reinvest in some tripper service for our overcrowding on the Route 3. So...
What would the headway be, when you say every third trip?
It would be...
For the...
It would be every 40 minutes between downtown Glendale, for the trip between downtown Glendale and JPL.
And what about from downtown Glendale to Montrose?
Not bad.
From, it would be the same thing. Because the, all the buses would go between downtown and the college, and then every other bus would extend from the college all the way to JPL. So it would get the Montrose and the JPL Foothill Boulevard.
Did you look at the option of running the buses to Montrose and then, then from there only running the JPL route every third bus?
We did look at that, but when we look at our ridership, we don't have a lot of destination, there's not a lot of folks getting off the bus or getting on the bus in that segment between the college and Montrose. Montrose is not a destination for the population that is on this, on this bus route. There are metro services that also run along the same route, the Metro 90, 91 buses. They run more frequent service, and they run from downtown Los Angeles all the way out to Silmar. So for folks that are taking kind of a through trip or a longer trip outside of our geographical area, it's much more convenient for them to not have to transfer, so they can just get on a 90, 91 bus and do just one trip without having to have the inconvenience of transferring.
What would the cost savings be within every other?
Within every other...
I say that, that's the line that I'm most familiar with. Most, underline most.
When we, when we did our original proposal to the Transportation and Parking Commission, we needed to find a couple of very large chunks of money to, to, to save. One was the Route 12, canceling the Route 12, and the other was doing the sufficiency on Route 3.
So instead of every third, instead of every third tripper?
It's every other trip.
If you did every other?
It, this is, this is the number for every other.
Oh, this is the every other?
Yes.
At 40 minutes headway?
And 368. Right now, we're running about 20 minutes headway.
I see. Okay.
So every other trip. So we're not abandoning any four riders.
How would you indicate that to the riders? Would there be, like, would it be on next bus? Would next bus have the ability to indicate that?
In, in our case, what we do is on the schedule, there, there would be the 31 buses, which run between downtown and the college. The Route 3 bus would still be called Route 3 that would run between downtown and JPL. So on their schedule, they would know whether or not they're taking a short-term bus or...
Actually name the line.
We'd name the lines. And so if it does fit with next bus, everything else kind of falls. So the head sign, so they know when a bus is approaching, is it going to be a short-trip bus or is it going to be a bus all the way up? This recommendation, that's why I think, I think is important to know, I'm not into cutting service. So I'm into growing systems and growing ridership. But financially, if you're going to make a cut, this would be the smartest place to do it because it impacts the least number of people. Like I said, we've been very successful with the City of La Cañada to restructure their service so that a lot of the folks we were carrying on Route 3 because of the afternoon school schedules is now being accommodated and paid for by the City of La Cañada. And gives us a little bit more flexibility to only run every other trip out there. So we're really investing our money where the ridership really is occurring.
Would that result, I'm sorry, would that result in greater frequency between downtown and GCC since the buses will be just turning around?
It, it, in this scenario, it doesn't because we don't have enough money to do that. However, in cutting the schedule for this service, there's a couple of critical time points where typically school lets out or school goes in. Almost all, all the classes start around 8:00 in the morning. So we would add what we call an extra bus or a tripper bus that would make an extra trip in in the morning to try and relieve some of our overcrowding. And then at the 1:00 timeframe, we have a lot of, dismiss a lot of Glendale College that really swamps all of our other routes. And so we would put an extra bus on just to make one trip to help clear everybody out and deliver them back in town. So we are enhancing a little bit of that, the service in the downtown portion by trying to relieve overcrowding, but there's not enough money with all of our savings to reinvest fully to improve that.
How much?
As, as we grow, hopefully, our sales tax returns, then we can look at, since we have good core service, where would you then add some additional service to meet the demand based on real ridership and a real demand for the service? So hopefully, we're back there in a couple of years.
How, how much do you save if you don't go around and increase the enhance, you don't enhance what you're talking about?
Council, Mayor Friedman and Councilmember Menuchyan, it's...
How much is it saving?
I want to say it's about $20,000 to add the trippers for a whole year. And I could come back with the exact number.
No, if, if you cut down on the number of buses that are going up past college, Glendale Community College, how much do you save by cutting the, cutting the number of buses that are going up?
368,000.
Yeah, it's, it's not an automatic math function because what happens, you have to figure out what you're going to do with those drivers in between time because you're still paying for the drivers. So by the time we do the running time, we were only going to run once an hour, we would have to figure out how to interline, what to do with that bus in the time that it's not traveling.
So you don't have that number now?
No, because there's not really a, it's not like it would cost half.
Okay. I know, I just, I'm thinking in terms of, instead of raising rates, if we can generate savings and save those savings, maybe you don't, we don't have to increase rates. That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, the, the savings wouldn't, wouldn't be enough to, to supplement the 460,000.
Will we do that with a number of other lines as well? Because I know certain times of the day, some lines are busy, some aren't.
Yes, you'll, you'll see that on some of our other recommendations where we're trimming and trimming off anything we can to make that. So that's our Route 3 recommendation. Our next recommendation was to cancel Route 13, and if we can do the next slide. Just to remind you, Route 13 was the reinvention of the metro Route 201 that operated from Glendale Adventist up through Glen Oaks Canyon. Over time, we tried to make that route more productive. We brought the route, kind of realigned it and extended it, came into downtown. The downtown portion really duplicates other services we have available. It was kind of like, how do we make this work and see if we can really get some meat behind it? Now that we've been doing this for a few years, you'll still see the passengers in Glen Oaks Canyon are still two passengers per hour. And we, the, the only people that we've really added to the system or added to that route are people traveling downtown that have other options of other B-line routes to, to ride. So our recommendation is to discontinue that service. A couple of the, of the passengers that typically ride that service are also Dial-A-Ride registrants. They're, they use the Dial-A-Ride system also. So it's just really moving them from, in some pieces, from the fixed route to the Dial-A-Ride service for that segment. Then item number four is an item that's, that's not shown up on the radar a whole lot, but we had, a number of years ago, received a federal grant to do a streetcar study and to implement a streetcar program downtown on Brand Boulevard. We have set aside in our fund balance the match for that grant. And so we'd like to kind of free that item up by canceling our participation in that grant, returning, they're not monies we actually have possession of, but by pulling out of that grant program on our forecast puts $170,000 of that match money back into the system to reallocate for other purposes.
The Americana streetcar, that couldn't fit into this grant somehow, could it?
This was just a study to do, design and engineering work for a potential of putting in a, a track And you mentioned the Americana program. It's, it's very traditional in transit that if you build it, doesn't necessarily mean they will come. We're one of the back, kind of backwards programs. The desire and the demand has to be there first in order for the transit service to be utilized. So in our, the experiment that Americana did with the trolley, offering a free trolley that ran very frequently downtown on our major boulevards, really wasn't utilized. So even if you do put it in and you do build it, doesn't necessarily mean folks will come and utilize that service. And then our last item for the discretionary services was a consolidation of some of our CIPs. There's been some that have kind of longstanding on the books. We've taken some other creative approaches to kind of leverage our funding with engineering projects and other street projects and development projects to attain some of the, the bus stop improvements or other transit improvements over time. And so we're just saying, we're going to consolidate those in the budget process, leave a couple of CIPs for critical projects that we have and, and at least take those other projects off the books. So then we'll move to our next slide, which is our prior, well, actually, slide 14, which is our priority projects. These are services that will, the changing will impact current ridership, but they're probably the least impact, have the least impact to the least amount of people that are currently riding our services. Now, if you remember back to our line-by-line analysis, routes that have 40 or more passengers per hour are really considered to be decent routes. Anything less than 20 passengers per hour typically in the region, you wouldn't offer those services, you would cancel that service. So we're looking at individual lines and saying, what's happening with ridership? Can we trim a little bit off of early and late trips? Can we kind of reconfigure trips so we still have service, but maybe it's not every 20 minutes, it's every 30 minutes instead? So we're still carrying core riders, but, but having some cost savings at the same time. So when we came to council back in September, one of our proposals that came from the Transportation Parking Commission was to cancel Route 13, which is our commuter service on San Fernando Road. Council had a lot of discussion and asked staff to go back and relook at, are there some other options that would work? Did I say that?
Route 12.
13, no, 13 hopefully is gone. On Route 12, we have a four-bus system we're operating right now. We have a, a good way to operate a three-bus system that still pretty much coordinates with train times that will save us about $75,000. I actually have cut that route already because we're hoping to implement this change for a July 5 metro length service change that we just heard about Friday. And right now, I have a cost savings of $68,000. And so I'm hoping to make up that difference through some other efficiencies on our, on item number five, where we're re-cutting the, the routes and trying to trim some services. So we'd like to do a four, a three-bus system on Route 12 as option number one. On option number two, we're looking at changing from a 20-minute to a 30-minute service and canceling some early and late trips. You'll see Route 1 and Route 2 are very similar. Right now, we interline those routes, which means we have five buses operating between 1 and 2. We would go to four buses in order to make this savings with some trimming of the, of the routes. the routes. Now, if you look at our productivity, how many people we move on these routes, our routes 1 and 2 are probably the lowest in productivity when you're not looking at Route 12 and 13. They're in the 20s. All of our other routes are in the 40s to the 60s. So the demand on Central and Brand is not as much as the other crosstown, Route 4, other circulators that we have, 67 passengers an hour riding on those buses. So our proposal here is to increase the headways. We have 30-minute service, cancel some early and late trips, and we'll reduce the, the biggest savings is coming from reducing it from five buses to four buses and doing it. On item number four, on the weekends, most of the businesses don't open up till later. And we're running the buses very early, starting at nine o'clock on Saturday and Sunday. So where we might not be able to get some folks to a work site as early, the majority of our riders are really traveling during the, the shop time or the businesses, time that are open. So one of the, the savings we can gain is by reducing our, what we call our span of service, starting at 11 o'clock instead of 9:00 AM and running until 5:00, where we get most of the ridership in the afternoon. That's a $15,000 savings. We're re, what I call recutting all of the routes, looking at where we can trim some service and at the same time, take care of some overcrowding issues with the schools. So where we've cut some service later in the day for Routes 5 and 6, we've put in trippers to make sure that we're not passing up students that are trying to get to school and also have room in the afternoons to pick them up and get them back home. One of the things that the city has done recently is sent out a, a letter to the, to the contractors that we have about, can you make some cuts in your contracts with us? In the last couple of years, we've gone out to bid for our contracts for both fixed route service with MB Transportation and the dial-a-ride service with Southland. And folks that know me know how tight I can ride an RFP and how I can squeeze every nickel and dime out of the process to get us the lowest operating cost for our contracts. So as a result, the contractors are, don't have a lot of wiggle room to come back and offer any additional savings on their contract. But there is a creative piece that we're proposing to implement with our MB contract. Our monthly cost is a little over half million dollars a year. And because our process for paying for the cost for a service for a month, takes about a month to pay them for service that has already been provided, what they do is borrow money to, and bond for, for the cash flow that they need to provide our service, make their payroll before we reimburse them for the cost. So we're considering making progress payments where we would save 5% off the total contract cost by paying them ahead of time. So we'll pay them for half the month and then by, at the end of the month, we'll pay them the, the remaining amount of money that balances with the actual service that was provided. So it saves them from having to borrow as much money, then saves us part of that cost to borrow. And then the last item, option seven, is we currently have a subsidy for recreational field trips that we provide to Community Services Department. Basically, they use that money to buy charter services for field trips for the seniors. And we put that in as, it's a nice service to have, but if we're making some cuts, maybe that should be offered as part of that. So our, our priority changes that we're proposing are $443,000 of savings that get us closer to that 3.4 annual service. Previously, we had talked about canceling all of Route 12, which is about a half a million dollars. So since we came back with just saving $75,000 off of that cost, we looked at trimming every other little route for every piece we could get to get some cash to make up for that. And that's what the, that's what our net is. Excellent.
Can I propose to continue this at another time?
Um, we can, we can go, I'm sorry, Bob, let's go to 17.
I, I do need to leave in about 15 minutes at the latest, so.
We're at the, we have three slides.
Okay.
And I have this, I have this one as well, so we need to be sure.
Okay, yeah.
So we'll, we'll go quick. On essential services, we are not recommending cutting anything that is really essential to providing mobility here for, for folks in town. The, the one that we're a little squeamish about, if we didn't have to do it, I, I would prefer not to. But Route 7 is our only route that really goes from east to west, is our, what I call our crosstown connection. Right now, we're running 20-minute service. We have terrific loads on that route for school service to the Toll, Keppel, Hoover area. One of the things we can do is kind of fix some running time, which means our bus is going to run a little bit more on time, but we could move from 20-minute to 30-minute service.
I'm sorry, are these options that are up here, the essential service options, are these all essential service options, are these accounted for in your budget already as reductions?
They're counted for in our 3.4 million dollar proposal that's coming to you today.
So you're proposing a lot of service reductions as well as, including essential services?
This, this, this is what, this is the only essential service that we're suggesting be cut.
You mean E1, not the rest of these options?
No, the others are options. If you'd pulled stuff out of the, the other proposals that we had and said, oh, we need to find $100,000, I wanted to have some numbers on there, you say, well, what does that mean?
Okay, I see, it's not very clear on the slide, but I understand.
Okay, so the options would be if we pulled anything out of any of the plans, whether it was revenue or expenses, this is what cutting Saturday service on Route 5 would cost.
Okay, thank you.
So if we went from 75, from a, from a, let's say we reduced the fare increases, the increments of a quarter on the fare increase, what's an increment of a quarter on the fare?
It would be half of, well, a third or half of whatever.
$700,000 a year per quarter? Okay, so as you think of where we are to where we need to be, about $700,000 per quarter on the fare adjustments.
I just wanted to have a handy place for you to take a look at what your options might be. So based on our recommendations, we have two slides left, the revenue slide for the budget and the expenditure slide for the budget. So Slide number 19, please. So in revenues, I wanted to kind of recap where we are and what use we're making of funds that we're receiving. Almost all of our money is coming from outside sources, transit, specific revenues, because we're a special revenue fund. So we have some federal money for capital grants for our buses. And we have some state capital money that's come in for our bus replacement that we are slated for this next year. All of the other grants are Prop A local return, Prop C local return, Prop A incentive. We get a piece for B-line, some Prop A incentive money for dial-a-ride, and then our Prop A discretionary growth over inflation, which is the second year of a three-year program that Councilmember Najarian worked with us to get with Metro. So we have, $8.3 million is coming in from transit-specific revenues based on sales tax and then based on the state and federal grants. We do a number of charges for services. We obviously have our B-line fares and our dial-a-ride fares, but we also sell service to MTA and to La Cañada and to Los Angeles County. Again, trying to take advantage of our overhead and spreading that out and providing coordinated services within our area. With Metro, part of our Route 3, they, we, they buy service from us to, to operate part of our Route 3 as a prior, a number of years ago, we consolidated. LA County purchases dial-a-ride services from us, from the unincorporated, for the unincorporated areas here in our area. And then La Cañada purchases both fixed route service on Foothill Boulevard and dial-a-ride service. So we're taking the cost of our doing business, selling it to some other agencies, but in the long run, it's helping us keep our cost per hour low for all of the entities involved. We do sell our CNG fuel at the CNG station to the public, and we do receive a royalty on five cents per gas gallon equivalent, about $10,000 a year. Revenue also is generated at the transportation center when we sell passes for employee parking in that neighborhood at about $25,000. And then we have some revenue from MTA pass sales and that fare subsidy program currently that will go away, shall we get rid of the fare subsidy program? And then we have some other miscellaneous money from advertising and other revenues that, that come in. So our current revenues as we have in the budget is $9.9 million. We are subsidizing our operations with Measure R local return. We're proposing that for this next year. Three million of the 3.9 million is kind of an offset for prior year's use of the unallocated fund balance, which we're using for capital match. So it's basically going to be the match money for the buses we're purchasing this year. And then we receive about $1.8 million a year, half of which we're asking to come in as an operating subsidy for this next year, which brings us into the Measure R local return transfer of 3.9 million.
So Catherine, do you have a slide that shows where ongoing revenues to ongoing expenses will be after these various adjustments? Put it up with Measure R money and the like?
No, all we're, all we're showing on these slides is the balanced budget for fiscal year 12 between revenues and expenses. We have revenues here and expenses on the next slide.
Okay, well, I think, I think it's important to be able to see where these adjustments put us in an ongoing basis.
Most, most of the revenues and the expenditures that we're proposing come up to about $3 million a year, which will be an annual $3 million that we're going to see for that five-year period.
And that offsets our current operating deficit of about 3.5 million.
Which is in the next slide, isn't it?
Is it?
The next slide you're showing, the $2.5 million proposed reduction?
Well, we do, we do have, we're on the Cliff Notes version, so there is a slide that kind of tallies it all, that tallies it all together.
Okay.
So with your budget, there would still be a use of reserves?
Only the, the use of reserves, because they're technically not, they're just unallocated fund balance. In that unallocated fund balance, the majority of the $7 million that is there right now is actually grant match that we've already made some commitments to. It's just, it stays, it just lives in the unallocated fund balance. So we're in the process of, this next year of buying six buses, most of which we got grant money from. The, the match for that bus purchase comes out of that fund.
You just raised a point that is tremendously critical as we look at the health of this fund, something I don't think I realized, that our fund balance is not available for appropriation.
It, it is available because we have not sequestered the match money, but we do have commitments.
Wait a minute, it is, but it really isn't. I mean, you, we've, we've received grants that we are committing a match to. We need to break down that on a detailed basis, I think, in order to really understand the health of this fund.
Yeah, I mean, what I'm, what I'm wondering is, we've been, for many years, we've been go, using what I would consider reserves. You can call it whatever you want in terms of different funds. And it's put us in a terrible position. I don't know what happened in the past and why other councils did this, see no evil, hear no evil, speak no evil, and allowed this transit fund to get into the deplorable situation that it's in now and that it's going towards. I'm interested in a budget that's going to address that so that this is a sustainable fund going into the future. And it seems to me that you're still short of that.
Well, if I can add to that, what I'm hearing is, which is why I think we need this detail, I'm not hearing that we have 18 months to correct this problem. No.
Now, why did this not, why has this not come back to council? I mean, I don't understand this. Was it that staff was so afraid that council wasn't going to make a decision that staff wanted, that they just were reluctant to bring it back? I've been here for two years, and I've heard about this problem since the day I was on council, and I don't know why you would wait until we're in this fiscal crisis to deal with the fact that our wonderful transit system, which so many people rely on, is running out of gas?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, what we, what I said last budget year was, we were going to do a thorough analysis so that when we brought these recommendations to you, there was some solid backing. Otherwise, we could have come in and said, let's just slash everything 10 or 15%. I didn't think that was the right way to do it.
Well, you could have come in with the transportation's recommendation of raising fares as well, which at least would have helped.
And we started that in September and then deferred the rest of the presentation until the budget, until this budget.
So when was the last time fares were raised?
They were raised, they, they were established once. The system started in 1984 and was free until, they were raised, 1984 start of service.
Okay, it doesn't really matter. Let's just say it was a long time ago.
It was in the early 90s.
Even Steve can't remember how long ago it was.
And, and when, when did, when did the city real, and I'm not trying to pick on staff, I'm trying to sort of figure out how we got into this. When did staff realize or somebody realize that we were now going into sort of reserves and those sorts of, that it wasn't a self-sustaining system?
Madam Mayor, several years ago, we came back with some service enhancements that actually we called revenue neutral. We didn't, we didn't increase the revenue. There wasn't a desire at that time if we could do it in, in a couple of different ways. So we adjusted, we adjusted the system. But what has happened is, is that our, our revenue is finite and our costs have gone up. Now, Catherine talked about the, the reserves, those, those are grants that, that, you know, if, if that money needed to be used for something else, you know, we would have to take a, a look at some of those capital projects that we've been, we've been budgeting for. But the idea here was, and this I think was the slide you were referring to, Mr. Starburt, or were looking for, is the enhanced revenues and the enhanced, or the expenditure reductions that Catherine has gone through then gets you to this, which is our balanced budget.
But Steve, the question is, assuming revenues still will not match expenditures, they don't, even under your proposed plan, will still be off by half a million dollars a year? How much we actually have, and, and it can be completely legitimate that we decide, okay, let's continue to run at a half a million dollar deficit a year for some period of time. But the question is, what do you have in your fund balance that you can apply that against and what your projections are as to when you may be back above water again?
And what we need to do is then get you the fund balance.
And I don't, and what I'm hearing is, there's some commitments of fund, I mean, I look at Catherine, it shows we've got almost $9 million in cash and $9 million fund balance. If we've made commitments of that for some match on capital expenditures, then we really don't have those funds to absorb any deficit we may run in this fund. It'd be in more dire condition than, than these numbers lead you to believe.
Right, and, and one of the things that, that Ms. Ingle was trying to do, and what staff has tried to do, is to come up with the proposed changes that had the least impact on the community. You saw all of those other options, Madam Mayor.
No, I understand that, but.
You pointed them out. We can go into those options as well.
I understand that. My point is that staff is coming to us with a budget that is, you know, of course, what you have to do, but it's also a budget that adds misery on misery in terms of what the people of the city are facing. And I'm just sorry that this wasn't addressed in terms of revenue versus expenditures at a point where it wasn't coming at a time when people were hurting as badly as they're hurting now. If those fares had been raised, even two years ago when I heard about them, when I first came on council, we would have at least have some money, some more revenues coming into the system. So, you know, it's all past history and it really doesn't matter at the end of the day, but I'm just sorry that this wasn't foreseen a long time ago, that it all comes down to now where we're, you know, this, where we have to cut services and raise fares at a time when people are hurting. I think that if somebody had looked at this five years ago even, I mean, I think in five years ago even, we weren't, our revenues weren't covering our expenditures in this, in this transit system. So this, this discussion really should have happened years ago.
You've said for a number of years, we have to come back and address our fares.
Right, exactly. Thank you for finally saying that.
Been saying it for a number of years.
You're the first person who's said that. It's been a number of years, and I just don't want to see us get into this situation again.
And, and I'll tell you.
We need to be able to pay for what we offer. We have to be able to pay for the services that we offer somehow. And this particular fund hasn't been doing it.
Well, and, and Madam Mayor, let, let me just point out that, that we've continued to provide service and expand service.
Right.
The fares, even if we doubled the fare, it's, it's not going to be as big an impact to this as it is, as the fare, as the service reductions are going to be.
Right.
You see that the fare doesn't generate a tremendous amount of money, and raising that is going to help, but it's not going to, it's not going to balance the budget. We need to get to the point, now we've, we're providing more service than we can afford. And this service level that we've had, we've been providing for probably 10 years or more. And what happens is, is, again, the finite resources. You're right, we should have come back and looked at, at the fare revenues. We got hit a little bit sooner with the, with the, with the recession and our, and our tax revenue went down quicker than we thought it was going to. And some of the projections that, that Metro had given us, and they were just trying to do the best they could as well, ended up being a little bit higher than we expected. All said, for as long as I've been here, we've been using grants to buy buses. So we've not even been depreciating or setting aside the money, we've been pushing it. We've been pushing it all in to provide the maximum level of service that we could. And no good time, I guess, there's no good time to actually reduce service and raise fares, but granted, point well taken.
Well, this, the, the current economic time shows up the weakness in this fund, just like it has in other funds, where we've, where we've found ourselves in a difficult financial position, because it was relying on revenues that are no longer there. And it's easier to grow the system in this sort of a program than it is to face the tough decisions of having to raise fares or cut back services. Two years ago, there was a lot of talk about expanding services in the Montrose area. Your staff has known that we had to bite the bullet on revenues and services, and yet at the same time, there was a lot of discussion about, well, we need to have a trolley downtown, we need to have east-west service up in the Montrose area. And frankly, the staff would bring forward and say, "I don't know how we're going to do that in this current structure." So I think, I think it's been a combination of if revenues continued on the same plane that they were doing three years ago, we still had to make reductions, and yet there's been an unwillingness to come to grips with the fact that we have a very big city program with big buses and lots of people dependent on it. We don't have a revenue structure that can support it, fares that are over 15 years old, and services that we've expanded. Jono, is part of this reserve allocated for the Transportation Center?
Yes.
Yeah. See, and again, I know I've been a thorn in Jono's side, because for as long as I've been here, I've been unwilling to move forward with the Transportation Center, even though we can get some grant funding for it, because I know in my heart it'll increase our operational costs, and we don't have a basis for covering it. We just don't. So we reserve part of this for a Transportation Center that I don't think we can necessarily afford. And it's based on a vision for this system to be a rather big-city kind of transportation system, and we don't have the revenues to support it.
I've always felt it was Jono's fault. All of this is, he's the one with a master's degree in traffic engineering.
[laughing]
That's a joke. He's wonderful.
Jono, how much, how much of the reserve is there marked for the Transportation Center?
We have about, an exact number...
Almost all of it?
No.
Good portion of it.
Good portion of it. It's $5 million. The total, the total cost is $10 million for the Transit Center.
Six point six.
Five million, six point six.
Six point six.
Now, the...
That, I'm sorry, Jono. Which is what I was referring to as, if we need the money...
Yeah.
There it will be. And I, I mean, it is not easy ever to, to cut into a transit service. I think Mr. Najarian can, can speak from experience about the metro system, and I know, Madam Mayor, you mentioned in other cases where we're not alone.
My apologies, but I have to, I have to go.
Thank you for doing overtime.
While Mr. Mnuchin is walking out, I think you need to look at a plan that takes you from where you are, given what your reserves are, and ramps you up to a point, because I don't, I don't know how you tell the public we're going to go from a quarter to 75 cents. Now, maybe you can, but I think you'll get a huge flashback as a result of that. I think you're going to need to take it at increments, that maybe there's six-month increments at a time.
Well, that is, that is in the proposal, in their proposal.
And I think you need to watch your, watch the fund balance and ramping up to get you to a point where the system has to be self-supporting.
Let me just ask, are you, did you have another slide before we get, because we're starting to get into, I think, the meat of the discussion?
This is the last slide we were going to show you, which was, was the, and again, let me repeat, and we'll do this, and as Madam Mayor, you made, made mention it was a little confusing. We'll go ahead and take those other options and prioritize them, at least on what the staff believes would be the least impact, but, but saying that, knowing that those, those we felt had a much greater impact. But that will close the gap even further, and that'll close the gap completely, actually.
Well, I wasn't suggesting that we do that. In your, in your slide, it was unclear as to what had been accounted for in your budget. That's all I was asking.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, I'm going to provide you that ability to look and say, if we want $100,000 more, or $150,000 more, here's where we can go. The decision is yours, but at least you'll have the option to say, we can get this thing back to, to pure balance. Again, and, and this is my responsibility, but the staff was trying to make sure, or trying to get us to a point where we could reduce the least amount of service and impact the least amount of our revenue.
I think we all understand that. Okay, can we have comments or questions?
I have a couple of questions. When we, when we started line three, we bought Metro line, whatever it was.
177.
Are we, are we in any trouble when we start cutting back service on line three? Don't we have an obligation to maintain a certain service level?
The service level that we're recommending incorporates our obligations to Metro for that portion of service. So running it at, at every 40 minutes, we'll, we, we won't have a problem with that service that they're buying from us.
Are there any other lines? Because, because that's basically a profit center for us, that we charge them, what, $120 an hour, and we end up paying $50, $60 an hour for our...
No, for the, for the services that we sell to other agencies, we sell it at our fully allocated cost. So we don't, on Route 7, 177, for instance, we don't get what Metro's cost is.
We make money on, are there other lines where we make a profit? No?
No, there isn't anything we...
So they realize the benefits of our efficiencies. It's not the other way around?
That's why they're buying it from us, because we can operate the service cheaper. But we are recovering our fully allocated cost when we sell our service to other, to other places.
I think, you know, these fares are way, way too low. We've been running this structural deficit for years, and I think we should have raised, at some point, we should have raised fares and done the route study after, because we're really in a bad situation. In fact, on some of the, you know, it looks like we're in a very good situation to get some buses the year after next, but there's a local match of like 500,000 that we're going to have to pay. So I don't know where that, Mr. Starbuck, that's part of the, the money that, that we have to, to kick in for.
Mayor Friedman and Councilmember Najarian, in our forecast, we did a five-year forecast that incorporated all of our capital programs, which includes all of our bus replacement. So we have the match money is incorporated into our numbers out through 2016, because we have a number, we have three bus grants coming up, and we wanted to make sure that if we were participating in those programs, we have the match money available to us to do that, so...
Is that part of that fund that Mr. Starbuck talks about? I mean, the unallocated part?
Yes, and it is incorporated, it is incorporated into our whole financial forecast for the five years out through 2015. So when we're saying, we're going to, we're going to try and trim $3.4 million a year either through revenue enhancements, reductions, that incorporates the plan for the fully planned...
But reserves that money for those purposes.
Right, and also for the facility. So that's our, our fallback position if we decide not to do the facility. It does open up about $6 million we can reprogram into other activities. So that's our, that's our ace in the hole cash balance.
If we, if we subbed this whole service out to Foothill Transit, would we obtain any savings in that? Have we looked at that? Because they've approached many times and said, "Let us take over your routes. We'll do everything A to Z. You can slap your name on the side of the bus, but we'll have some savings and efficiencies."
There isn't a, because we are operating kind of as a subregional provider already and are subject to the same requirements that a Foothill Transit is, our operating costs right now are $76 an hour. Operating costs for Foothill Transit are higher than that. And so they're not going to be in a position to sell service to us like we sell to the other agencies and take a loss on it. So there's a couple of things that happen. You kind of lose your control over the quality and, and the, how your services are planned or delivered. And then there's an increased cost to the region by having another operator with significantly higher overhead costs to provide those services. So I think we had answered in a previous memo that Mr. Zern had done for the council when that question came up. We actually gave you some costs per hours of what their contract costs were and what their overhead costs on top of that were. So our fully allocated cost is $76 an hour, is one of the lowest throughout LA County for the type of level of service that we are doing.
I've heard other numbers from other carriers, like Southland Transit, I've heard is down in the 50s. Is that true?
The, the, there is a cost for...
Barcadian Transit, or one of those...
Right, it's, it's between $50 and $60 an hour typically for an outside contractor for the service that we are paying for directly. However, on top of what we pay for those contracts, there are the city overhead costs. There's a cost allocation system that's in place. There are support services for administration, for public works and traffic and transportation. So there's, and on top of that $50 or $60 an hour you're paying, there's another $20 an hour that are the fully burdened costs that it actually takes to run the system. So when you're looking at Metro at $120 an hour, most of the other large transit agencies are in $100, $120 an hour fully burdened cost. We're still significantly less at the 76. One of the things we'd like to try and, and obtain from council today is at least some general direction. We have a complication that's arisen with our MetroLink service, our Route 11 and 12. MetroLink's May service change did not have the best scheduling of trains, and so on Friday, we were notified that they are going to change their train schedules on July 5th. So for us to put out a new schedule for July 5th, we are making decisions this week to actually cut new service and new schedules. We'd like to try and do the three-bus version of Route 12, so that we still have good timing with the trains, but can implement that cost savings fairly quickly. The other changes we're looking at, based on council's decisions, if we can adopt it in the budget, probably would not take effect until August 1st, because we do a 30-day notification for either fare increases or service changes.
I will take comments from my colleagues and from the public, but I do want to allow Mr. Mnuchin and Mr. Weaver to give them an opportunity to also weigh in, since we've now gone two hours beyond the time that was allocated for this meeting. So I don't want to pass them by on that. But I will take comments while it's all still fresh in everyone's mind as well.
Well, let me start by saying, I think you did a wonderful job, all four of you here in the, in the chamber. This is a really great presentation. I think you laid it out right on, on the line and easy to understand. Route 12, I assume, is mostly commuters for the most part, very few students and... No, I'm, I'm fine with the reduction, and this is something that we need to do, and yeah, I think the best bet will probably be to kind of phase it in, go to 50 cents and then another point where we would increase it again, unlike Ms. Najarian, who enjoys increasing fares for seniors. Just joking. I think it's something that we're going to have to do. I mean, we've got a great bus line going, we've got a great transportation system, we've got to make sure it's healthy and, and takes people to the places that they need to go to. So when we cut back service on certain lines, I know we're going to hear from Glen Oaks Canyon, for instance, and when we come back, it's not popular with those few people that take the, that take that particular line. But on the other hand, when you look at the numbers and you've got sort of oversubscribed lines, those are the ones that are obviously, you know, best used and the ones we need to keep. Anyway, thank you very much for this. It was very well done.
You know, the fare increases are long overdue. I hate to see some of the service cuts that we've implemented, but that's what we're stuck with. Let me, you know, let me think about that and see if there's any rabbits I can pull out of a hat.
You have more rabbits in your hat? Pulled a lot out.
I have confidence in him, in his rabbits.
So do I. It's amazing what he's been able to produce.
We just got to do it. I mean, it hurts on service and fares, but this is overdue.
Let me first say, I completely appreciate Mr. Mnuchin's concerns about raising fares. I mean, everybody, nobody wants to do that, especially right now. However, we can't assume that the only impacts are fares. I believe that service cuts can have an even more detrimental impact on people that ride the B-line. If you're someone who's trying to get to a job, or to pick up your kids after school, or to go to daycare on public transportation, that fare, that keeping that fare static might be very much outweighed by the loss in flexibility and by the loss in transit options. So the service cuts, I believe, as you heard from your survey, and I completely believe your survey, your, the people that you've spoken to, because that's what I've heard from the community, that they're much more concerned about service cuts and more interested in maintaining and enhancing services than they are in the fares. And I've heard this from multiple people. I have not had one person, I'm sure I will, you know, when this, maybe I will when more word of this gets out, but I haven't had one person email me saying, "The fare's got to stay at a quarter." I mean, you know, that's already such an outrageous fare. Please don't raise it above a quarter. No, I've had the, I've had people write and say, "Please don't cut service on this route. Please enhance service to this area. I really want B-line over here." So to me, that's the first priority. Because again, for someone that doesn't have a car or has limited mobility options, that loss in mobility, that loss in flexibility, that loss in time even, having to wait longer for a bus, we can't assume that that's worth less to them than the, the small amount of money we're talking about. You know, and not that at this day and age, we can say what's small to someone who's maybe, you know, that's really hurting economically. I'm just saying that there's other things to look at that can be, you know, painful to people. My goal would be to try to keep the service as intact as we can and to find ways of enhancing the service. And like Mr. Najarian, I'm uncomfortable with some of the service reductions. I'd rather go to more accelerated fare increases, whether it's going immediately to 75 cents and then to a dollar, or stepping up the way that we do those increases. And I understand that that's not everything in terms of our revenue, that's a small portion of it, but we need to really be able to keep this operation running. As you know, we get, you get to a certain point where you cut so much that it just does not become a viable service for people anymore. So my first goal is, is maintaining the system first and foremost. The fares are, have to be secondary in this. We need to be sure that we provide these, this transit options for people who need them. I'm sorry that, you know, the fare increases weren't done years ago. As you heard my frustration, I feel like, I know it's not staff's fault, I would blame anybody past councils of kicking this can down the road, of having a fund that they knew was being depleted and not taking action to stop that. And I, I think we need to do that. We need to make sure that, you know, in this budget going forward, that we have a, a plan for making this more sustainable. And I, I'm not sure that we're there yet in this budget. It seems to me that, you know, we're still in a position where we're going to not be able to, be looking at further reductions in service, which is not acceptable to me, especially since we have an aging population, and the demand that we have now may not be the demand we have in the future. I think the demand will increase in the future. We need to be ahead of that. So I, you know, I do think that you need to bring this back when we have a full council. I don't know if we can do that tomorrow, council, if we can add another short study session, or how we can fit, fit all that in, or when this needs to be kind of hammered out.
Well, you're going to need to incorporate a budget in your adoption, but that can be a plan that then is later, I mean, earlier in the year, I don't mean later, later, but sometime after adoption finalized. I'd like to have time to sit down with staff and look at some of the details of the, the operation and the fund balance, and, and look at how we may be able to accomplish something of what you're describing, but...
Well, in any case, you do have a quorum here, and you certainly have a consensus for the large strokes in, in your budget. I would still like to, to really see if we can, if what we can do in terms of some of those service reductions. And for me, it's not so much the 20-minute to 30-minute wait. I don't like that, but I think people could live with that. But the outright reduction of routes, I just, you know, I find that difficult. Okay. Further comments? Okay, can we have a motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry, I do have a card.
Madam Mayor, real quick, so it, it seems that at least for now, the fare increase, there's a comfort level with that. Obviously, we have two council members not here. We can prepare something and bring it to a council meeting to discuss with all of the various options of 50 cents, 75 cents, a dollar.
Yeah, why don't we bring that back and talk about that?
We got 50. I mean...
Yeah, I think we should...
75, a dollar, a dollar twenty-five, we can, we can give you all those to think about, but maybe, that, because this is, that was an important piece. We wanted to see if we could get consensus, at least on the fare.
I would agree with Mr. Najarian. I think that those riders are greater impacted by cancellations, reductions, than they are by that increase.
Well, we'll bring that piece back sooner rather than later, then, for, for full discussion and decision.
And also, I agree with the, the pushing the senior age. Okay, let me go to the public. Herbert Milano.
Mayor Friedman, members of the City Council, my name is Herbert Milano. I want to thank you for the thorough presentations on the budget that you have directed. I want to thank you for the thorough presentations on the budget that you have directed. I believe that this is essential. My recommendation, and one that I made for a very long time, is that the, these budget discussions should perhaps be more fruitful if they're brought by one department or two departments every month throughout the year, so you have a chance to sort of evaluate overall departmental funds and prerogatives and so forth. There are alternative ways of determining how to staff a city department by determined budget reductions. And one of those is by doing a comparison between different years. The city's full-time employment, as of, according to the CAFR, was 1,589 employees in the year 2000. It's now 1,904, according to the CAFR, for a 20% increase. As an example, police increased from 228 to 256 for a 12% employment. Salaries increased for police, for safety, from $52 million to $133 million, a 137% increase, according to the CAFR. One approach to attach, to approach this is to separate operational versus project-based employment. For example, program-based employment would be like traffic enforcement, building and safety permits and inspections, parking maintenance and landscaping, operations of the power plant, street cleaning, Section 8 operational transactions. Project-based employment would be more in lines of implementation of a new DNA lab, low-income housing projects, major capital improvements, new development agreements with the redevelopment agency. And so, there's a difference between the kinds of employment that you have and where you actually have some flexibility. You also have employment based on general fund resources, or city, to say, generated sources versus sources from other agencies and special revenue funds. Therefore, if you separate those two, you have another way of viewing where your flexibilities may lay. Once you have established that baseline of jobs, you create full-time equivalent hours as a baseline, along with activity-based metrics to evaluate productivity and controls